Thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Campanelli. Counselor Evans.
Here.
Mayor Krasinski.
Here.
Counselor Luddy.
Here.
Counselor Payanuffo.
Here.
Counselor Weshat.
Here.
Counselor Russell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a question.
Thank you very much. Now, we will have our next order of business with the audience of citizens. So, I don't know how many people there are, but whoever wants to start is welcome to come up first and say whatever you want to say. No one? Okay, well, we will move on to our consent agenda. And so, I guess we can combine these, right?
Yes, you can vote on it. You can move the consent agenda as presented.
So, we'll make a motion to do that? To combine the consent agenda items? And to...
Do you have an item that you want to talk about?
No, I don't.
Okay, now, you're going to just move it as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to move the consent agenda as presented.
You have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Any discussion, first of all? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to new business. We have a presentation from our health director.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Judy Sartucci. I'm chairman of the Board of Health for the Central Connecticut Health District, and I want to thank Mr. Mayor, Town Council, for having us here this evening. We also want to thank you for your continued support of the Health District and its many activities on behalf of not only the town of Berlin, but Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, and Newington. And our congratulations to you all, too, on your reelection. I'd like to just take a moment and just introduce some members of the board that were appointed by the town of Berlin. We have here, first of all, Pat Checo from Berlin. Carolyn Wisaki. Carolyn is our oldest sitting board member. She came on board. She came onto the board representing Berlin at the time that Berlin joined back in 1998, and also Ray Gurema. Okay, and I'll turn this over to Charlie Brown, our Director of Health.
Thank you. And Pat, you're going to advance for me?
I will advance.
Okay, good deal. So, my name is Charles Brown. I'm the Health Director for the Central Connecticut Health District, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come here and present before the council and to the public. Go ahead and advance, please. So, some general information about the Central Connecticut Health District. We are the local health department for the towns of Berlin, Newington, Rocky Hill, and Weathersfield, and we serve a combined population of about 98,000 people, all told. We're one of 20 regional health department districts within the state of Connecticut, and for 19 years now, as Judy had mentioned, we've been providing the three Ps of public health. So, okay. Some more general information about us. We have seven full-time staff members right now, four part-time, and we're currently working out of five offices. We have offices in each of our town halls, and we also have an office in the Newington Senior and Disabled Center. We have over 50 active professional lay volunteers. We use those volunteers in a variety of ways to help support our activities. Primarily, though, a lot of the help that we get from them is to actually do our mass vaccination clinics every year for influenza. We have an oversight, as Judy had mentioned, from a 13-member board that includes myself and 12 other board members, and you can see the breakdown up there as they have it by town. Next slide, please. Basic fiscal information, financial information from last year. You see, we had a little bit over a million dollars in revenue for the '14-'15 fiscal year. It broke up between our town contributions, which we get $4.91 per person for each one of the towns that we represent. Program revenue, which is a lot of the fees that we take in from licensure and from providing services like vaccinations, and then grants that we get from federal, state, and other areas for things like bioterrorism and block grant activities. And a little bit of interest income thrown in there. Our expenditures are pretty much what you'd like, what you'd see in any service industry. Our primary expenses really go to salary and benefits. We do have some professional contracts that we maintain, and our operating expenses are there as well. Okay? So, to explain a little bit about public health, because healthcare and public health often get confused. And just to give you an idea of how we actually look at things from a public health perspective. So, the primary focus of healthcare really is on a sick individual. When the individual walks into their doctor's office, and they're really focused on how to make that individual person better. From public health, we look at the population as a whole. So, each one of our communities is our patient, and we're ensuring, a little bit trying to make sure that they stay healthy. When healthcare, their basic intervention tools that they have is to diagnose and then treat that particular malady that that person's being affected by. Where in public health, we look at the diagnosis aspect of assessing our populations, assessing the communities and the health status, and then developing policies to help improve that health and assuring that those policies and regulations are followed and administered in an efficient and effective manner. The process that healthcare uses really looks at how they manage patient care. Where in public health, we look more at systems management, how we can improve the environment, how we can help to, you know, change human behavior to make the population as a whole healthier. The outcome... Oh, go back one. That's okay. Go up. Go up again, please. There you go. No worries. So, the outcome... The outcome at the end of this is really to try to return an individual to health from the healthcare perspective, to bring them back to a state where they're not ill. Where public health, really, our focus overall is making sure that the community is healthy to begin with and that we improve the health of the community through our actions. So, let me give you a quick example for influenza. Go ahead, Pat. So, the healthcare response in influenza is this. One more. Initially, they screen for risks. They try to teach how to prevent, and then they recommend to give an annual flu shot. One more, please. If somebody gets sick, they may provide Tamiflu or other medications for somebody who's infected. Then, they may treat secondary infections potentially if those occur, and then ultimately, report the disease to the state public health department. From public health, we look at it a little bit differently. We use public information campaigns to be able to try to get across the three basic things, you know, wash your hands, cover your cough, make sure that you stay home if you're sick. Then, we monitor and track seasonal occurrences of these diseases. We use targeted and mass vaccination clinics to make sure that the community has some herd immunity to protect themselves and others. And we promote policies like making sure that healthcare workers actually get vaccinated to protect themselves and their patients who may be at risk from contact. So, I mentioned before the three Ps of public health. And really, the three Ps are prevention, promotion, and protection. And I'm going to go through and give you some highlights of what we've done in the last year to really address these three Ps. So, in prevention, one of the main things that we do every year is actually, we provide a lot of flu vaccinations. We provided over 2,200 flu vaccinations last year over 10 mass vaccination clinics. And this is where we primarily use a lot of our volunteers, and we use these clinics as an opportunity to test our plans. If we had to vaccinate for pandemic influenza or something along those lines... Okay, I'll go fast. Hit okay.
Are we plugged in to something?
No, no, no. So, just hit okay, and this is not going to take all that long. So... There you go. So, we use the... Yeah, go ahead. Back up. Go up, please. One more. There you go. So, we use those mass influenza clinics as a way to test our plans. And we've actually gotten pretty good at getting people through those clinics. With pre-filled forms, people walk in the door and pretty much walk out with a shot in about two to three minutes. So, we're very efficient. We use them to test our plans, to improve our plans every year, and we couldn't do that without the volunteers that we have. This year, we also did something new, where we actually had one pilot clinic that was targeting youth within the area that we did at a school within the district, and really are trying to get at more children, because children generally are a lot of carriers of disease and really have been known to actually spread influenza. So, the more children you have vaccinated, the better off people are as far as the disease within the community, the more workdays they actually, the parents are able to have, and then ultimately, the kids stay in school. One of the other prevention areas that we have was our Putting on Air's asthma program. And this program really is primarily where we get referrals from medical providers, and we do home visits within the home for asthma patients, where an environmental health specialist will go in with an asthma educator. They'll spend about an hour and a half in the home looking at the potential triggers within the home so that they can actually educate the people and actually get people involved to address those triggers. So, in some areas, they've been to where we've actually helped them get windows or addressed mold conditions within the home. So, we do use that team approach, and we also use the asthma educator to educate on proper education of how to use medications. Where in a doctor's visit, they may not have the time to be able to do that. And we've seen a large, a big response in how people actually are able to reduce the number of ER visits that they've had as a whole, which affects overall the cost of healthcare in our communities. In addition to that, we do distribute radon kits every year. We do education about radon, and it's warm enough right now to be able to ride your bicycle, so we actually do bicycle helmets as well for injury prevention. Okay? Next slide, please. So, one of the health promotion activities under that second P is our Achieve Health Initiative. And this is where we actually engage... Things just don't go right with the technology. Postpone, please?
Yes.
Okay. So, we actually are using their Achieve Health Initiative to actually do our community health improvement planning. And a lot of that is focused around three main areas, around healthy eating, active living, and substance abuse and positive mental health. So, tobacco control, things of that nature. And we've done a lot of work in this area. We've worked, we're working with our partners to be able to really operationalize the community health improvement plan that our district had put in place a couple of years ago. One of the ways that we're doing that, and I'll just ad lib from here, is by doing a community walking program. So, our communities, actually, the four communities that we have, have actually done a walking program. Berlin and Rocky Hill have done a competition for a couple of years. Last year, we actually expanded it to four towns, the four towns within our district. And Berlin, I'm happy to say, actually won the four-town competition here in the spring. And I brought along the plaque that shows that you're the 2015 winners for being our step into spring walking competition. So, you're going to be the returning champion for the first time. So, and I know that the other towns are going to be gunning for you, so be prepared. Last year, we had about 331 employees from the four towns that participated in this, as far as town employees. They walked, goodness, thousands of miles. So, to be able to show that as leaders that being active is the right thing to do. Okay? As we look at the fourth P, and one of the fourth Ps that we had, I said there's three Ps for public health. The third P is protection, and protection is really focused a lot around the preparedness aspects of what we do. So, the emergency preparedness plans that we put into place, the actual relationships that we have individually to be able to deal with anything that gets thrown at our way. As, anthrax, smallpox. And in the last year, the relationships are really drawn upon as a potential for Ebola hit, for emergency infectious diseases. In this last year, for under the protection, we've also looked at preparing to do a statewide exercise for medical countermeasures that's coming up here in April. So, we've been reviewing our plans, making sure that they're tight and ready to go. Our volunteers are trained, and our staff are ready to go so that we can actually do the things that we've been planning to do for about 14 years. Our fifth P, or fourth P, rather, that wasn't on the three Ps for public health, but is a good agency perspective, is actually preparing for the future. So, our agency in the past year, we actually worked with our board and staff to update and put together a five-year strategic plan. Now, that five-year strategic plan dealt with things like promoting healthy environments, actually looking at how our agency is the infrastructure that we have and moving forward, really being able to prepare for the future as we go into things like accreditation and moving our agency forward. Part of that infrastructure piece in looking to move forward, our board has actually had a centralization committee for about two, three years now, and they were very active over this past year in trying to figure out, is this the most efficient way that we can operate? So, we've met several times, talked about the pros and cons of having five separate offices, and the board actually engaged a consultant to do a feasibility study as to whether or not it be feasible to combine down into one office. Here, on November 17th, the study was presented. That board agreed that it is potentially feasible to move forward, and we're going to be talking to the town managers and town leadership on what the implications, the potential implications of consolidating our offices down to one here very soon. So, it's a stepwise process. This is something that we've communicated with the town managers about in the past as far as we're going to do the feasibility study and move forward. And final, one of the last things that we're preparing for, and we spent a lot of time preparing for in the last year, is how we look at the potential for accreditation here in the future. So, looking at the administrative policies and the health policies within the district, making sure that we're tracking the performance of both our district and how we do quality assurance, the quality improvement efforts to make sure that we're doing the right things, and then performance tracking to make sure that we're being effective and efficient in the way that we actually perform our task. The last two words I always have are thank you. Thank you for your support. Been here a little bit over a year, so I've really learned a lot with respect to our jurisdiction, the strengths that we have, and I really want to say thank you for the support for the district and that I've received personally over the past year. And I stand ready to answer any questions. And once again, I apologize for the technology. Yes, ma'am?
As a percentage of the state's budget, do you represent what?
A percentage of the state's budget?
Yeah.
So, as a percentage of the state's budget, we represent what percentage? It's a very, very small percentage.
Okay, so, as a percentage of the state budget, it's very small, which I would expect. As a percentage of your budget, what percentage is salary, admin, total economic package? Because I looked at those numbers real quickly, and I would have loved to have seen that number, because it looked like a very large number relative to the amount of people that you have on staff. To me, that looked like salary bloat a little bit, and I'd just like you to comment on that.
Okay. In general, any service agency that you have, the majority of things that we have as far as expenses are related to salary. We have had actually turnover within our agency to where we don't have a large number of folks that have been there for years and years. So, our salaries really are actually very low compared to comparable districts within the agency. They're about, you know, about where we would expect in the mid-range for districts of our size. And that is something that we actually do look at within our budgeting process over time.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am?
That's great. We won that wonderful championship. That's awesome. I love fitness. I'm out in our beautiful preserves every day with my dogs.
Good.
And I think it should be a year-round thing, not just in April, and spring into, you know, fitness in spring. It should be year-round, and perhaps during the times that people are in the woods, which I am all the time.
Yeah.
And I'll do a cleanup and keep the woods clean, because there's, it's disgusting. Ragged mountain, the growth gap camp, it's disgusting what's found in there. I clean up all the time, but other people do, too, but it's just...
Yeah. And I will tell you this. One of the things that we're actually looking at doing is expanding those walking programs much broader than just the employees as a whole. We would really like to see expansion into the community, to have community walking groups, neighborhood walking groups. The Surgeon General came out with a call to action here in the past few months to talk about the use of walking to make people fit, to address the obesity concerns, diabetes, cardiovascular fitness, that everybody can move out their front door, and the ability to do that and be active within their community is something that's low-cost, low-strain, but high-impact with respect to a lot of cross-cutting issues. So, I would agree with you to take advantage of the opportunities that we have within the communities. Within the Achieve Health Initiative that I mentioned during the slides, that's one of the ways that we're engaging the communities in planning for walkability issues, in planning for how we engage the communities, not just in the springtime, but all the way through the years. Okay? Thank you. Additional questions? Thank you very much. Oh, yeah. Who would say that at the end?
I don't... At the end.
At the end?
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah. Okay, thank you, Charles. I thanked him already. Thank you for that presentation. Okay, so, we're still on new business. We're on topic number two, which is approve and adopt the Resolution and Charter for Compassion. Do we have a motion on this? Any motion? We need, I think we need a motion first, right?
I'll move to adopt, approve and adopt the Resolution and Charter for Compassion.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Do we have a second on that for discussion purposes?
Second.
Second. Second. Okay, second. Yeah. Yeah, now, see, I'm sorry, you know, and I'm sorry because I'm... My past life on planning and zoning, when we went to this portion, when we were voting, we didn't take any other testimony, so, you know, any other information, but I understand I'm in a different form. So, I'm learning. I apologize for that. So, anyway, go ahead. Yes, you can... You may speak. Thank you.
Did I hear correct that it is, it is adopted, affirmed?
No, no.
No.
Oh, it's just a...
Just for discussion purposes only.
Okay, okay. So, all right. Hi, everyone. My name is Greta Steifel. I've been here before. Some of you in this room know me or of me. I want to congratulate our new mayor.
Thank you.
And good to have you, and it's great to still have Rachel on board, and it's good to see some of the same people here. So, I'm going to talk about the Charter for Compassion. Some of you have maybe read about that in the recent Berlin Citizen, which reporter Ashley Koos with a S, right? Is the reporter here, actually, and that did the article on me. I'm going to read from my notes because I don't want to meander around. I want to try to stay as target as I can. I have presented four times prior under the Democratic regime, and now, I have my fifth time here to start all over again with a new regime. And hopefully, I will be successful tonight with an adoption and affirmation of the charter. So, having said that, I'm going to read from my notes. "It's my goal that we can move forward this evening for a vote of yes to create great for Berlin, to uplift Berlin, and to inspire Berlin." These are some of the taglines that I have come up for creating Berlin's charter. However, this would be subject to team input, people that would be involved in the initial stages, because there's a lot of work that goes into this before it really gets underway. So, these are just some of the names that I have come up on my own. Anyway, I referenced Ashley doing that article, and what the charter is, is a very positive program and will benefit everyone, from the elderly and the poorest to the voiceless animals in our shelters. It would be, or could be, a conduit for facilitating positive actions and change. It could be a catalyst for further enhancing our educational system, which is incredibly wonderful. We've had many accolades in our educational system. I've met with Dr. Irwin and actually, in the initial stages with this program, and he had met with also Dr. Christopher Cook, who is the professor over at WestCon, which came the last time to present. And part of the program of the Charter for Compassion could segue into the social-emotional learning awareness curriculum that is being put in place, that was approved by Dan Malloy and Senator Blumenthal, and is actually on the Senate floor for a vote. So, that's the last update that I got. But in terms of the town, being a town of compassion can not only benefit Berlin, but it will also benefit our neighboring townships and cities and can include educational facilities like CCSU, who is an official compassionate university in our state, the second one. There are more to come. And it can help Berlin in many ways never thought of possible. Charter for Compassion is not a cult. It's not a religious movement or order. There is no political agenda involved. It is not a certificate program that offers a seal of approval. It does not subscribe to a single definition of what a compassionate community should be. What the charter is about is this. It invites communities of all sizes to bring compassion to life in practical, specific ways through compassion-driven actions in neighborhoods, in businesses, schools, colleges, healthcare, the arts, local government, peace groups, environmental advocacy groups, and faith congregations. In the modern society that we live in today, there is a disconnect that's so pervasive that unkindness, indifference, and selfishness appear to be the norm. Compassion, empathy, and kindness and caring are basically left to the wayside. I have some stories, actually, recently that prove that point, but I won't go off on a tangent today, anyway. This Charter for Compassion is an organization that has been around for over 15 years, spans across the world in major cities and villages. There are over 4,900 and counting of cities and towns and villages that have affirmed the charter. That is unique to their specific parameters. And so, it would be for Berlin. You cannot have a vibrant, healthy, happy community without social sustainability. It is one of the three components. The first is economics. Second is environmental. And the third is the social aspect. It is the one that is the least popular. It is the one that people just don't even know what it really is, so consequently, it's left to the wayside. But it is absolutely a necessity in the respect of having a total cohesive compassionate community that will prosper on many levels. Businesses prosper. Home values will stabilize and even go up. If you have a neighbor that is not of the mindset to fix their home or doesn't have the money, wouldn't it be nice to have a compassionate community, maybe to help that person out a little bit, to clean up the yard? It helps people's property values. There are so many ancillary benefits that go hand-in-hand with the Charter for Compassion. You'd have to actually really study the charter itself and read and drill down, and I'm hoping that each one of the council members and our new mayor have in fact do that, have done that, because as my notes say, I'm going to give a pop quiz at the end of my presentation. I'm only kidding. So, when all of the three pillars of social, economic, and environmental sustainability are in balance, that is when sustainability is truly achieved. So, it's not just about being nice to one another and having a kumbaya moment. It is really and truly a program that embodies so much more. And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but if I have to, I will, and I'll keep on coming back, and I'll go on my sixth time in January if you'll have me. But there is nothing but positive that comes from this. This afternoon, the new mayor was, had obliged a request of mine, which I thought was very nice, and he had spoken directly to the city of Danbury's mayor, whose also name is Mark, and they had a dialogue about some of the concerns that the mayor had expressed to me. And so, I wanted to find out exactly how that conversation went and what you think of the charter so far from the mayor-to-mayor perspective, Mark. I mean, Mayor Zinski, sorry.
Yeah. I mean, when you're done with your presentation, we'll have our discussion.
Well, do you have any questions of me, first of all?
Do we have any questions? Anybody?
Concerns?
Do you have questions for Attorney Weber?
Sure. Yeah. You want to...
Nothing for you.
Do I have questions?
No, I have a question.
We have some questions of the corporate counsel, but do you have more to finish your presentation?
No, I'm just about done. So, that's it. So, I'm hoping we can have the affirmation tonight, and so I don't have to keep on coming back. And I do have one question. If this does not get through for the fifth time, what would be the way that referendum possibly, whereas upbeat is specifically for the schoolchildren of high school age and really is, you know, a very segmented kind of program, a wonderful program? This program is for everybody. It crosses across all lines of, you know, young to old, poor to rich, for the animals. So, there's absolutely no downside to this because not only is there no cost, it's an all-volunteer-based organization, and there is just positive things that come from this. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thanks. We'll ask that question of our corporate counsel on the referendum issue.
Yeah. So, that was the... Yeah, I went off on a tangent about the referendum. If you do deny the access to go forward, where do I go with it from here?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm done and...
Yeah. Grab a seat, and we'll continue our discussion. Thank you very much. Yes.
So, Attorney Weber, I know in the past, when we had talked about this, you were going to work with Danbury and Milford on their, what they had passed in terms of resolutions. I was just wondering if this is similar to what they have.
It's almost a carbon copy. I mean, I've modified it from... I added a few things, tweaked it, but basically, it's... The resolution is probably 80 or 90 percent their resolution, and the charter is almost 95 or 98 percent. I looked at the website, the Charter for Compassion website. That charter was adopted almost entirely by Danbury and Milford. I, off the top of my head, I don't think I tweaked more than two or three words. I may have changed a word I thought would be a better choice or something, but it's very, very similar, almost identical to their charters.
One more question on this. So, if we do pass the resolution and this charter, we are not bound in any way to the program that Greta would like to get up and running? I guess that's my question. I want to clarify that. We resolve that we agree with this charter and that we are going to incorporate it, but the town is not in any way liable for what that organization does or monetarily. I just wanted to make sure that it is truly volunteer, and we are just saying that we as a town agree with the Charter for Compassion, but that organization is not...
It's a symbolic gesture. It's not an official act. It's not part of the collective bargaining agreements. It doesn't create any staff positions. There's no funding for it. It can be funded... If some volunteers use this as a springboard to do something, they would have to come in and request an appropriation. It would be part of the budget process. I don't see it being anything more of a commitment than a symbolic gesture saying we endorse these principles or this concept of these ideas. I don't, you know, it can be as extensive as the town wants it to be or as, you know, limited as the town wants it to be.
Go ahead. Yes?
So, the town has a charter, and so I'm just concerned, Corporation Counsel, if there's any confusion we're introducing by referring to this as a charter per se. I know the town has a charter, and this is referring to itself as a charter. Is there any potential of ambiguity by referring to it as a charter in comparison to our charter of the town?
I don't see that being an issue because you're not going through the official charter process. You're not going through the statutory process to adopt a charter, so it's not an official charter. It's not the charter for the town. We have that. So, I don't... I did change the wording to something different because that's the way the organization promotes it. That's the website. That's kind of their key phrase. But as far as legal issues, I don't see how anybody can confuse it. If you go on our website and you look at our charter, we have an official charter that was adopted through the statutory process. So, I don't see that being... Certainly, that wouldn't be a reason to say, well, we're not going to adopt it. I don't see a legal problem there.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, you know, for the sake of some history, have we done this, you know, for any other similar organization? And I'm just thinking of other organizations that help out the town, be it the Lions, be it the Kiwanis, Raising Berlin. I just, you know, I'm just trying to keep some consistency. That's all.
I just think, I think Greta refers to upbeat a little bit, and I... But I think that's a very different thing, because that is through the schools and it is paid for. It's in their budget. So, I know it has similar kind of aspects of it in terms of helping the community, but it is not the same thing at all, because it is funded by the school system. So, I think that's the only kind of thing that we've had in the past, to my knowledge.
And that was through the school system?
Yes.
Not through the town?
Correct.
I can, from the 12 years that I've been involved with the town, 10 years myself, my cousin, two years, we've not been involved... Nothing like this has come in front of the town, and I don't know the history with the other organizations. Generally speaking, most charitable organizations, most volunteer organizations have their roots somewhere outside of the government, and then they may come to the government from time to time, offer a service, offer a program, ask for some funds or for a break on some... Like, we give concessions to some of the organizations. But to my knowledge, most of them start outside the town with some other... They have a mission statement, which may be very similar and very noble, but they start outside the town for the most part.
And to do that, obviously, whether we adopt this charter or not, they could still come to the town as any organization could, right?
I mean, I don't specialize in setting up charitable organizations, but I assume they could start up a group or a charitable organization, have a mission, put together a board, and promote whatever they want to promote, like many other organizations do. I don't see how that would... Again, that's not my field of expertise, but...
No, I know.
That's typically how... I mean, they can start independent of the town, just like the Lions. Some of the organizations come to our town. Even some organizations from out of town come here and ask us for concessions, golf, you know, outings, or permission to do things. They rent our fields or whatever. There's other ways to accomplish it. And I don't know, maybe some of the staff members that have been here longer can speak to whether we've helped start up or adopt or endorse other...
I know. Kind of monopolizing this conversation. I do know that we do do resolutions, though, recognizing different organizations, you know, Leukemia Month, that sort of thing. And I guess where I'm kind of getting hung up on, this is almost similar to doing something like that, right? Recognizing that this is, you know, exists when we say it will be Men's Cancer Month in Berlin, and we're recognizing it. Is this resolution, if we looked at it on a scale, fairly equal to something along those lines?
You can put in the record whatever reasons, whatever your motives are as to why you're voting for something. You can instruct me to change it. I took the resolution almost verbatim from the other towns and from the website. You can do it in terms of a proclamation, a recognition. It can be Charter for Compassion Month. It can be something that you embrace, you know, indefinitely. There's no rules on this. It's not a binding legal... It's not an ordinance. You haven't had a hearing. There's nothing binding about this because you haven't gone through the process. It's not part of your organic law. It's not part of your constitution. It's just a gesture, a symbolic gesture at this point. That's how I view it.
Right. Charlie?
I have another question for counsel. If this was denied tonight, we're not hindering this organization in any way, are we? We're not stopping them from promoting themselves in Berlin?
I would imagine not. You can actually think it's a great... You could think it's a very noble, worthy idea, and you could be supportive of it, just not vote for it. I mean, that can happen, and it doesn't mean it can't gain support and...
Just, I can think of many, many good charitable organizations in town, and I would hate to have them all try to attach themselves to the website. I think it'd become a lot of confusion. I kind of still have the mindset that government should do governmental things, and, you know, as good it causes a citizen and wonderful as these acts of kindness will be for the community, I just don't think it's for the government to get involved in. But I don't want to stop it in any way. You know, I don't want to hold them back.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other? I wonder if there would be a... I mean, we can take the vote, or we can... I guess we've got to take the vote, no matter what we do. But I wonder if there'd be some different... I'm not really comfortable with the wording myself. That's just my opinion, but... And I certainly support the organization. I think the town, you know, should embrace it, and I think the townspeople will with whatever Greta comes up with. I'm sure everybody will be happy to do that. But that's just... I'm just a little bit concerned about the wording. I'm a little bit concerned about consistency. Again, I think, again, not for this organization, not, you know, but to... I feel that if we open the door in some way, this may or may not open the door. I understand that, that we'll have a lot of, you know, organizations coming and wanting what I guess I would sort of call is maybe more of a endorsement as opposed to support. I'm all for the support. I'm not sure the town should endorse it officially, but...
One last question.
Yes, you can. Certainly can. Why not?
Talking it today, right?
Yes, that's okay. That's what we want.
I just want to go on record as saying that I will be supporting this tonight, and I know not all of you have possibly had the opportunity to read what the charter actually says, but in light of the anniversary of Sandy Hook and some of the things that have been occurring in our country and abroad, I really think to symbolically say that we as a town support compassion with no liability to the town is the right thing to do. So, I just wanted to go on record.
No. I don't think we can under this portion. Yes?
Mayor, so you indicated some concern for the language, and under the Charter for Compassion, there's a statement in, it's a third paragraph, that says, "We therefore call upon all men and women to restore compassion to the center of our lives." It's a great desire. I'm just concerned on how someone might take that as saying that they've lost compassion, because I think there's a lot of people that have compassion in the town of Berlin. I don't know why it happened to be bolded in the copy that I got, but...
Same here.
That one kind of struck me in an odd way. Mayor, as you've indicated some concern over some of the language, it indicated that in the last paragraph, that we urgently need to make compassion a clear, luminous, and dynamic force in our polarized world. There's an urgent need for a lot of things, and I'm not sure if compassion is the only thing that needs to become urgently encouraged of everyone. That was kind of, you know, you had a... Mayor, you had a question about the language too on that, so those are kind of just two things that jumped out at me when I read through that charter.
Okay.
I would like to address that, please. May I have a question?
Okay. You've got just two minutes, Greta, and we've got to take our vote and move on.
Okay. In response to your comment, Mr. Evans, this is not just about compassion. This is about social sustainability. And have you ever seen a Venn diagram of the three parts of social sustainability? This is not just about compassion. Paris, actually, Paris, France, is a city of compassion, and there is an owl pouring, obviously, from around the world from what happened recently with the terrorist attacks. It's not just about compassion. It's about being, embracing the idea, the concept of being good and kind to one another. I run into people all the time that are very uncompassionate. I saw a woman struggling at the grocery store at Stop &amp; Shop. She was crippled. dynamic force in our polarized world. There's an urgent need for a lot of things, and I'm not sure if compassion is the only thing that needs to become urgently encouraged of everyone. That was kind of, you know, you had, Mayor, you had a question about the language too on that, so, those are kind of just two things that jumped out at me when I read through that charter.
Okay.
I would like to address that, please, may I have a motion?
Okay, you've got just two minutes, Greta, and we've got to take our vote and move on.
Okay. In response to your comment, Mr. Evans, this is not just about compassion, this is about social sustainability, and have you ever seen a Venn diagram of the three parts of social, of sustainability? This is not just about compassion. Paris, actually, Paris, France, is a city of compassion, and there is an owl pouring, obviously, from around the world, from what happened recently with the terrorist attacks. It's not just about compassion, it's about being, embracing the idea, the concept of being good and kind to one another. I run into people all the time that are very uncompassionate. I saw a woman struggling at the grocery store at Stop &amp; Shop, she was crippled, couldn't even get her little pushcart into the car, people were walking by this woman, 10 people, I, I could not believe it, I actually got out of my car, walked over, and helped this woman. You talk about compassion, there is not enough of it, and I think that for you to sit up there and make that comment, I think you should abstain from even voting. You met Dr. Cook specifically, yourself, had a dialogue with him, one-on-one, and if you don't get it by now, I don't think you ever will. So, having said that, same thing with, with you, Mr. Panessa, you've had this whole government thing, that you, that you think that this compassion thing should not be endorsed by Is there something wrong with Danbury and Milford, and four other towns that are coming online? They see no problem with it, why do you see a problem with it?
The problem I have is that people that don't agree with you, you berate, and that's not compassion at all.
Not at all, you actually, no, actually, you berated me the first time I ever came up and spoke. You embarrassed me, and I called you out on it, and that is not true.
Okay, you know what, that, that's enough of the discussion.
Well, he started it, as he usually does.
No, I get it, but I think-
So, I, I am here to do something good for this town. I am here as a, as a person who wants to evoke change, positive change, and do really great things, that will probably take less money out of the town of Berlin's dollars, and put it, you know, I mean, I'm a fundraiser, I do a huge amount of fundraising, I've raised over-
Okay. Greta, thank you, thank you, we really-
Well, I'm here for the fifth time, and I'm, I'm quite aggravated that I have to, you know, and I, I can't seem to get through to anybody except Rachel, thank God, you've, and Bob, he's not voting.
Greta, Greta, honestly, we have to end the discussion, we have to take the vote and move forward.
Okay, take the vote, then.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate all the comments. Certainly, nobody does not support compassion, I mean, that's on the record for me, and I think from all of us, it's just the, I think it's the vehicle of this particular charter, that I, I have an issue with myself, but anyway, that's enough said, I think, so, let's take the vote, the vote was, the motion was to approve Charter for Compassionate Care, so we'll just go ahead and, we'll poll the commission of the councils. How do we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Any abstentions? So, the motion will be denied. I will say that if the wording was different, I would have been more comfortable with it, and this does not mean, in my mind, and I, I think in all of our minds, that we do not support your organization, and will support it, with whatever you, whatever you go.
Who created the wording?
No, we're, we're through with the discussion, we moved the motion, I'm just making a statement.
What wording are you talking about?
No, no, we're, we're done with the discussion, Greta, thank you very much, thank you.
Mayor, I recommend, after, discussions can have with individual council members.
Absolutely.
It's always, it's always open, that's available.
Now, I can talk to the document you're referring to, that you're denying.
Again, let's move on to the next-gen item, Mayor, it's my recommendation.
Yeah, that's no problem with that, right?
I emailed a copy today, upon a request, it's the same one off of my computer, but I'll give her another copy.
We'll give you a copy before you leave, okay? Thank you very much. All right, let's, let's move the agenda item here. Okay, number three, third topic is approve the acquisition of town's streetlight assets from Eversource, we have a motion on this for discussion.
Do we have some questions?
Yeah, we, I, yeah, we do have some questions first, right? Actually, for, for you, Bob, just a couple of questions, I know this is going to a public hearing, correct?
Do we have to move it?
Do we have to move to discuss it, or just can I ask it? So, let's, so, let's make the motion.
Do I have to read these separately?
Yep.
Yes, all three.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move the, move to approve the acquisition of town's streetlight assets from Eversource, for an amount not to exceed $709,302.51.
Do we have a second on that? Just for discussion?
Second.
Thank you. Can we, can we put these all together, and, and, yeah, so, okay, so, so the next one, go ahead, three of them.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a performance-based energy service contract with Tanco Lighting of San Francisco, California, for the LED conversion of town's streetlight assets, for an amount not to exceed $850,000, subject to Corporation Council approval, and also move to send the, the awarding of a performance-based lease agreement of not more than five years, with the Bank of America Public Capital Corporation, for the streetlight acquisition, and LED conversion program, for an amount not to exceed $1,600,000, to a public hearing on January 5th, 2016, at 7:00 PM.
Do we, do we have a second on that? Do we second, do you second that?
I second over the first one.
Can we combine all three, and?
I'll second.
The other two?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
We also have someone here from Tanco, so-
Okay, good, okay, good, so, just, just a question before we get started, though, with that, I just have a question, Bob, just, we have the first two motions, I know, I know it's going to a public hearing, do we still, do we have to approve the first two before it goes to public hearing? I know there's some different issues in the motions, but, just kind of a technical-
Basically, you're, you're approving the purchase price for the lights and the, but it's subject to-
The public hearing, right?
Subject to the public hearing, it's, it's subject to the funding.
Right, right.
It's one thing to say we're going to agree to this, but you have to have funding, you have to have a way of funding it.
That's, that's kind of my question, like, wouldn't we do all that after the public hearing, and I'm just thinking, that's just a technical issue?
Well, it's a, you know, do you put one before the other, if you don't have, if you're, there's no support for-
The concept.
For the concept, for the purchase of these lights, and the installation, then you wouldn't have a leasing package with a public hearing and agree, how you're going to finance it.
Wouldn't you make that all one public hearing, though, the whole thing, or not? I mean, can you combine all this, and, and I'm just trying to-
You can, but the public hearing is specifically on the leasing, yeah.
For the leasing, I get that.
That's all, that that's really, and that's required by charter, but-
Right.
We have not had authorization to even enter into the contract yet, so we wouldn't get to the lease unless we were authorized to enter into the contract.
Right, but even to move to, and again, I, you know, please bear with me, because it's a little bit different than I'm used to, but, let's say we have questions on the purchase of the lights, so, I guess we can get those answered now, obviously, before, but wouldn't that be something we'd have in the public hearing, too?
The public hearing is pretty much-
Just for the leasing.
Similar to the Naresco-
Yeah, I get that.
Lease, the terms of the lease-
Right.
The interest rate, things such as that.
Right.
The choice of the lending institution, where the contract itself has questions that you may have regarding the actual purchase, or why do it?
The contract has actual purchase, but, so, I, I guess, again, my question is, the actual purchase, let's say people want to discuss it at the public hearing, members of the public, we already would have moved that tonight, right, so that wouldn't be subject, that wouldn't be a topic you could discuss after we obviously approved it, right?
Not in the public hearing, correct.
But there's always a motion after the public hearing to approve that, so if there's enough-
They could bring it up.
They can bring it up, and then we could say, as a council, based on public input-
Right.
We're not going to approve the-
The, the-
The funding. The funding.
The funding.
But the, but the contract- And the contract's subject to funding, right? So if there, there's no funding, then there's no contract, so-
Right, it, it just seems, and again, I, you know, I'm sorry, I, I just, it's different than what my experience has been, it just seems like it's sort of the horse before the cart, like, we have a public hearing on, on the whole thing, hey, we want to buy these lights, here's what it's going to cost, you know, but that's not how you do it, so I get that.
That's right, there's no, the, the public hearing really doesn't kick in for the purchase of the lights or the contract, because that's a council decision.
Yeah, okay.
And that, that-
And public input could be, I guess, at the audience of citizens, or whoever wants to comment, yeah, okay.
Correct.
Okay, all right, well, we're, we're moving forward here, it's only been a couple meetings, so we're, we're working on it, you know, okay.
Someone is here from Tanco.
Yes, so, I would love to hear from them, yes.
The main thing is just, it's contingent upon funding.
Right.
It has to be on the record, and the approvals specifically-
To go to the funding, to the public hearing.
To go to the funding, and, and as Denise was saying, we just don't do hearings on contracts, in other words, you can do that without a public hearing, and you probably wouldn't do a public hearing on a lease, but we have to under the charter.
Right, right, I get that part of it, yeah, okay.
And maybe Denise, I don't, you know, we've kind of, as a council, I think the majority of us here have had a conversation about switching over to the LED lights, so I don't know if there's any background, maybe you can give, and I don't know if you all already spoke.
We did a little, but this had been a-
Yeah, I mean, I, I get that.
This goes back to the spring, actually, and even prior to that, Art Simontian had been involved with CCM, whose project this was, they went through the process to vet out the firm that they would recommend towns engage with, which they did the bidding process for settling, not settling, but choosing Tanco Lighting of California to do this for the state, then each town has the opportunity to either enter into it or not. You can certainly do things differently, this could have been done through the Naresco lease as well, but Art had been part of the CCM committee that had vetted the different firms that were applying to do the performance-based contracts, so that that goes back even prior to when Naresco began. This was back in probably February or March, and if not even earlier, but, and then Tanco was successful, Tanco had come out, in April of, of 2015, council heard first about it to even proceed to the first step, and if you recall, there was going to be a buyout if we didn't proceed to the second step, because they were going to come down and do the audit of the streetlights, and then true up with Eversource as to whether the numbers jived, and part of the delay, we were supposed to have a public hearing on the lease in September, but part of the delay was that, I believe, Eversource had gotten inundated at that point with many towns looking to do the same thing, so the figures that they had originally given us for the numbers and the buyout of the lights became stale, and they weren't able to keep up with the demand from most of the, and there was only, from what I was told, one or two people in Eversource working on this particular type of project, so we waited until just November to get the buyout figures from Eversource, and then it took a little time for Tanco and Eversource to agree that these are the number of poles, and these are the number of lights, and, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, that's a good thumbnail history, appreciate that, for my benefit, and anyone else, who needs that.
Well, it's a refresher, because it's been a while.
It's a good refresher, it's been a while, so that, that's great, all right, so, you're on.
Joe?
I thought Jack and Adam were going to be-
They are here, they are here.
Do you guys want to go first, or?
You can kick it off if you want, both, Jack and Adam have been involved.
Do you have a, they have a PowerPoint, too?
No.
No, no, that's fine, I just wanted to move, so I didn't get, you know, I couldn't be blind anymore, so.
Yeah.
He was at the last meeting.
Yeah.
I think that Denise explained it very well, good.
Thanks.
I'm actually going to read it, it's probably-
Yeah, I had, I had Joe Volinger come, because, you know, as you know, I'm relatively new, and I'm trying to catch up to speed on this, I felt, in order to give the council the background and where we're going in the future, Joe came in today, he, he's gone and spent probably two, two and a half hours with me today, going through all the details, he has a short PowerPoint presentation, we talked about it, we thought it would give you the background, and then we were going to go forward, so I'd actually like to have him give the presentation, and if there's any questions, we go from there. Great, good, perfect. Thank you.
I appreciate the listeners, you know? I'm sorry. I know. 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 Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for having me, the last time someone presented it was Jason Tanco himself, prior to your council, and Art Simontian was here, too, I just want to say, thanks for having me, and I've got a short presentation to share some numbers and that's with you. Next slide. So, a brief history recap, Art Simontian and CCM were together probably August of last year, CCM put out a large RFQ, requesting companies come forward to, which had experience in providing turnkey, streetlight replacement services. Art was on a committee of five or six other folks, different directors of public works, other people from other municipalities, they had the opportunity to vet five or six other companies, they chose three, Tanco was one of those three, I contacted Art shortly after we were awarded, and I didn't know it at the time, but he actually thought we were the frontrunner, but unbeknownst to myself, he, he and I worked together on exactly what Berlin would need, he shared with me the initial acquisition costs and inventories that Eversource had provided, I ran a financial analysis for him, and provided him with a preliminary proposal, in the background, he was requesting another proposal from one of my competitors, he told me this after the fact, when he said, "You're, you're my horse, I'm going to go with you." I said, "Oh, great, wonderful." So, we worked together for quite a lot, and he brought it to council with Jason Tanco to enter into, what we used to have was a two-part contracting system, that first contract was for audit and design, kind of reconciliation with the Eversource data, to make sure that we're going to change out what it is that you have. We've done over 230,000 streetlights nationwide, we're doing the island of Kauai, all the way to Maine, everywhere in between, and I'm sorry, but we can't have a meeting on the beach, everyone asks.
Probably should have one there.
I know, right? So, anyway, my point was, we reconcile data like this all the time, we always find that utilities are in the business of selling energy, and over the years, lights get taken up, put down, changed, we see it all over the country, reconciliation and audits need to happen, because cities are not being built appropriately, no one's really sure what's out there. So, in May of 2015, the first contract was approved for audit, the audit cost at that time was $15,222, you haven't paid us a cent, we've been working for you since February. Sent auditors, gathered all the data, we've received the updated costs and inventory from Eversource, we've reconciled all the fixtures and poles, I'm happy to say that your initial cost, acquisition cost assumption was correct, it was only off by a couple of dollars, so that was nice. A slight re-quote and reconfiguration, the overall cost of the project from the initial expectation is actually about $22,000 less. This slide, please. So, you're currently spending about $390,000 annually on streetlights, on rate 116, the maintenance and energy are all rolled into one bucket, on rate 116, there is a flat rate and a kilowatt hour, for example, a 70-watt light, you're charged $7.31 overhead electrically served, once you acquire and convert that light to an LED light, it goes to 42, 42 cents, but then you have to maintain the system, because you now own it, more on that later. The new annual cost, energy and maintenance program with us will be about $73,000, so you're going from almost $400,000 down to $73,000 annually, that's an annual savings of about $317,000, over 20 years should be about 5.5. The scope of the work that we usually do is a GIS audit and acquisition support from a utility, frequently, cities don't know exactly what they're looking at, so we offer that service to scrub, reconcile, let's say scrub is the technical word, reconcile the data with the utility data, to make sure that, you know, everyone's clear on what it is we're going to be doing, that we perform a lighting design, and Berlin is, your, your town is one of my favorite stories, that I tell everyone, you have a neighborhood full of 70-watt lights, which is a typical residential wattage, and there's 150 sprinkled in there. Had you gone with the amount of my competitors, they typically do a watt-for-watt replacement, they have a matrix, and they say, "100-watt light gets a this," those would have just gotten changed. We put all your data on a GIS-layered map, and perform a lighting design, now, we got the equivalent of an answer of, that's what we had on the shelf at the time, and we hear that a lot, so that neighborhood will not get the problems that you see around the country, which is, why is that light shining right in my window, why is it so bright, because those 150s will not be replaced with the 150 LED light replacement, but the 70-watt replacement, that neighborhood will now be cohesive lighting. replacement. That neighborhood will now be cohesive lighting. So now, one is roughly complete, except for the acquisition support you guys haven't acquired yet. The lighting design is 95% complete. Next slide. Ooh, I threw in some under, under. One more time. One more time. Yeah. The lighting design is 95% complete. The reason why I say that is because at this juncture in the project, we need to work with Public Works to show the design we want to do, get everyone's buy-in on exactly what we want to do. For example, New London, Connecticut, we're converting them too. We completed their lighting design, got to the 95% stage, and the police department said, "Well, there's some neighborhoods over here that should be brighter for public safety reasons." Things we didn't know. This is exactly the kind of feedback we like to have with cities. We do a rough lighting design, work with the city on certain locations and specifics that it might need. We're at that point now. We're asking you to approve this next contract, so that we can finish the design, get you installed, and start realizing your savings. This is an example of our first task. This is an example of audit data on a GIS map, showing each little light down to the foot and a half accuracy. We actually sent an auditor out to gather every single streetlight, and it's not just latitude, longitude, and wattage. We're geeks. We're engineers. I'm mechanical, Jason's electrical. We grab 30 pieces of data per streetlight. Pole height, setback distance, arm length, material type, material condition, you name it. We want to know everything that's going on at each location, and we use that to perform the lighting design and subsequent maintenance, should we win it. By the way, this data becomes property of the city when we're done. It's all included. And we can expand just beyond Cobra heads. New London was originally gonna sign for about 2,500 Cobra head fixtures, and it has expanded into all the parks, all the parking lots, the exterior of the school, exterior libraries. They're changing as much as they can. We offered weekly audit reports to Jim Horbal since Art left, and he has enjoyed those. And we reconcile the data with Eversource. Please. The terms of your acquisition from Eversource, as set forth by the docket signed in about seven, eight years ago, are that you will get all the standalone streetlight poles. There on the left is a streetlight dedicated pole. Eversource will sell you the dedicated poles and fixture. They can only sell you the arm and light on the wooden utility poles. Those utility, those wooden utility poles will remain property of Eversource, because they lease out lines to Connecticut, you're Connecticut, Comcast, AT&amp;T, things like that. So as part of maintenance, I'll speak to you real quick. If somebody runs over the steel pole, we call that a knockdown. You need to re-erect a whole new pole. Obviously more expensive than putting a new arm and light that you own, should someone run over the wood pole. That's called an arm transfer, a little bit different. So task two is the lighting design. We've reviewed and tested LED specifications for GE, Cree, and American Electric. We are product agnostic. I'll rehash that later. We've put up three samples in a parking lot for some folks to view, install and test samples. We'll recommend options to increase the savings. I think the GE fixture offers you the best savings. And then, once approved, we integrate that into the replacement plan. That's kind of where we're at right now. More about task two. Again, we're product agnostic. We focus on efficiency. Products made in the USA, products that are only DLC listed, which is the Design Lights Consortium. Those lights have to be DLC listed in order to qualify for the rebates from Eversource. Plus, DLC listing is kind of like UL for electricity. We don't want any just random light being put up. We want good lights. All these lights that we recommend have over 100,000 hours of service life. Your average high-pressure sodium light lasts 17,000 hours. LEDs last 100, and they have a 10-year warranty. So for 10 years, free fixtures, folks, and we noticed less than a 1% failure rate in the field. Again, GE's proposed. A quick note about control ready. Down there on the bottom, you see the photocell receptacle. That is a new NEMA seven-pin. The photocells have three prongs, hot, neutral, and ground, that effectively turn the light on when the sun goes down. A seven-pin receptacle makes you control ready for the future. There are a lot of really new emerging technologies that allow you to dim the lights, have the light tell you if it's broken, tell you how much you're using. Our contention is that, while nice, bells and whistles, you are currently on a flat-rated tariff. Dimming the lights after 2:00 AM offer you no financial benefit whatsoever. When those tariffs come out, we'll be right here for you to put your controls And also emerging technologies are Wi-Fi systems. And even further, GE has an intelligent cities mechanism that gives you gunshot sensing, cameras, parking lot notifications, lots of new emerging stuff coming. We're making you ready for it, but you don't have to have that now. Final cost estimates, we're here. We will handle material procurement and logistics management of the whole project. Task three, here we are. We'd like to do the rest of it for you. We'd like to manage the installation using a local electrical contractor. We've vetted over five companies, and they're all local here to Connecticut. We love doing that, because we recognize we're coming in from out of state. We like to keep as much money as we can in the local economy by hiring the local subs. Plus, it gives us a chance to see their workmanship and keep them on staff for maintenance. We'll commission the system by giving a data device to that local subcontractor, so that he can, in fact, do a re-audit when he installs. The data you will get will have two data points per streetlight, at the pole and at the light, within a foot and a half accuracy. We'll handle all the rebate and tariff change coordination with Eversource. You have to actually file paperwork. You have to tell your utility what it is that you did, the rebate you give directly to the city, and we have to help you get, build correctly for what's been installed. And we recycle all the old material for you. Maintenance. Now that you've acquired your system, you have choices. You can maintain the system yourself. When the PUC allowed Connecticut municipalities to buy their systems, several cities did it. New London, West Hartford, Torrington, Southington, larger cities that could afford to hire an electrician or two, buy a bucket truck, and maintain said equipment. Or you can hire us to help maintain it for you. I've quoted you a standard maintenance B program, which tends to be the one that most people are looking at, strictly because you've never owned the system before. We don't know what to expect. With the maintenance B program, you have someone to call and respond on issues. If any light goes down under 10-year warranty, you still have to go take it down and put up the new one and send it back. We'll handle all that for you. Free fuses and photocells, and any other activities or time and materials. I'll cover that more. We can go into a premium, if you like, or even get into custom. People are asking lots of questions, interested in lots of things. We can work that out. It doesn't have to be decided tonight. We'll even help you put out an RFP for maintenance services, if that's what you want to do. You don't have to hire us. We'll help you ask for what you need to ask for, so you can get the services that you need. Keep in mind, you also have a one-year installation warranty on workmanship. Maintenance long-term. Again, I've quoted you a maintenance program B, which costs $24,355 in the first year and $30,444 for the next two. It's a three-year term. The reason why it's cheaper in the first year is because you're on a one-year warranty. Not every maintenance issue in the first year is installation-related, so we give you a little price break there. Option B, time and materials for any fixtures replaced, if you have to replace a fixture beyond 10 years after the warranty wears out. So that's after 10 years on fixtures. Arm transfers. If the utility needs to replace a wooden pole, they call you, or they're gonna call us and say, "You have to move Berlin's arm over, because we're gonna throw that old pole away." That's gonna be a time and materials effort, so it's a simple knockdown or a complex. The difference of those, somebody just hits a pole and it falls down, or somebody really hits the pole and rips up the foundation, too. Cafeteria programs. Again, we'll work with you. We'll work with Public Works to determine what it is you need, what it is that you want, what your temperature is on either paying it forward or waiting to see when it happens. So a turnkey services recap. If we wouldn't have gone two contracts and would have just gone one, this would have been all, everything you got in one shot. Acquisition support from Eversource, the full GIS audit, the lighting design. We purchase all materials through Graybar, Wallingford. We hire local subcontractors for the install. We handle all the logistics, the project management, all direction to subcontractor, full recycling the material, all the rebate rate change paperwork, the final commissioning, and all the data package belongs to you. A quick word on Graybar. Graybar was awarded the U.S. Communities contract. They've had it the last 15 years. U.S. Communities is put out by the city and county of Los Angeles, the largest purchasing agency in the U.S. It's at a strike price for fixtures. That's the price we're giving you. This project will pay for itself in 3.52 years. Again, I'm a geek. Acquisitions about 664, 812 precisely. I know there was a "not to exceed." The project turnkey cost, including the acquisition, is 1.433. Earlier, it was $21,000 higher, when I gave you your initial preliminary proposal. We like to add a 10% contingency, because we never actually know exactly what's gonna happen until the very end. So rather than come back to council for more money, we throw in a 10% contingency as a just in case. We typically almost never use it. Total project costs of 1.576 and change. We estimate your rebate to be about $230,000 for a net of $1,347 and change. This assumes a $262 per fixture buyout cost. That is based on the Eversource acquisition that is active and ready for you to purchase. The annual streetlight expenditure was provided by Art, and believe me, he and I went over it about 50 times. Eversource's tariffs were used to calculate the energy. Rate 116, rate 117, what they charge you where you're at. It's all in there. Eversource's rebate, the expectation they've set with us, is 30 cents per kilowatt hour saved, and that's what we've based your rebate on, was what the wattage was and what we are designing it to be, times 30 cents. And then, of course, the GE fixtures that I know Public Works is favoring. Cost context for your consideration. Berlin is at about $303 per fixture turnkey. Plastow, New Hampshire, we were just awarded last night, is $310. Goffstown, New Hampshire, last week awarded, $299. Millis, Massachusetts, $322. That was a nationwide RFP, open to everyone. Plastow and Goffstown have sole sourced to us. West Hartford put out a CCM RFP to the three winners of the CCM RFQ. We were rewarded. We were at $294 per light turnkey. Vernon, sole sourcing to us. My cohort is at Vernon right now, presenting. They're at $296. And Montville's RFP, which has yet to be officially awarded, we were low at $294, just to let you know where you're falling. And, before you go, the reason why the fixture costs differ slightly is depending on your spread. That is an average cost. If a city has more high-wattage fixtures than low-wattage fixtures, it tends to skew the average. That is a before picture and an after picture. One more time. The color temperature of the lights, LEDs got a bit of a bad rap early on. The blue piercing light that you saw out of some of the import cars was about a 10,000 color temperature Kelvin.
Yes.
Yes. Streetlights have standardized on about a 4,000 K, which is natural moonlight. One more time. Again, I'm a geek, so I like this stuff. This is a photometric distribution chart. The vertical and horizontal axis and the tick marks on them are 40-foot increments. This shows you foot candle measurements of a 50-watt high-pressure sodium light just sort of blasting out onto the street. That is a 19-watt LED. And through the distribution lenses, we can put the light exactly where it's supposed to be, on the street, and the foot candles go out an extra 30 feet. Cities and towns in the northeast area. We are performing turnkey for Rocky Hill, New London, Vernon, West Hartford, Jewett City, Griswold's not up there, Goffstown, Plastow, Sudbury, Massachusetts. We've also done Winchester, Sharon, Somerville, Lowell, Malden, Hopkins, Sudbury, and Millis. I memorize things. And Walcott is being approved tonight. East Lime, we're auditing them, and Blasdenberry, we're auditing them, too. Any questions?
Gotta be on the mic.
When we discussed this earlier, I asked Art specifically about, oh, that's on my chair. I asked Art specifically about doing the ball fields, specifically Zipadelli Field at Sage Park. Do you know if those are included?
They are not. I was not aware of that, but we'd be happy to quote you.
Okay.
Of course.
Yeah, we discussed that earlier, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
What New London has done is, they gave us an initial PO, and we gave them kind of an addendum to say, "Here's your cost, and then if you want to also do this stuff, here's the cost." Rocky Hill's doing the same thing. We're doing the police department parking lot. We've kind of separated it from the project, so that the return on investment of the streetlights is known, and then there's an adder for the police department lighting.
Okay, because I was assured by Art that that would be included.
Yeah, there's been a changing of the guard. Art left, and we could certainly quote you.
Okay, no problem.
I think we should. Get a quote, yeah? Sue would read it. It's fine.
Yes, Dave?
So there was, I was told that there was the lights that are in Sage Park currently as you go in, that those are samples of these particular lights. And you showed that, I think it was 4,000 K was your, what you picked. Is that, are those lights at 4,000 K, or do you know if those are different?
Yes. Those lights are a 25-watt GE at 4,000 color temperature, and a Cree 29-watt at 4,000 color temperature.
Okay.
What you may be seeing, David, is humans are creatures of habit. We hear this a lot. When metal halide, and, no, when metal mercury vapor went to high-pressure sodium, everybody wondered where their white light went, and why this orange light had showed up. So what we're seeing now is, everyone's used to the orange light, and the white light comes, and it's a change. But also, there's some bad press out there from companies who don't know how to do it right, and they're just throwing up lights and not really paying attention to distribution patterns and whatnot.
Well, I think your comment about equivalent to moonlight is probably helpful for our community, especially as it will impact many of our residents very directly.
One thing you might want to know is, the pilot program we did for West Hartford on Farmington Avenue, we initially replaced the 150s there with a 70-watt GE, a 74-watt Cree, and a 78-watt American Electric. And the results of that pilot study were interesting. By nature of the technology, Cree's multiple LEDs onboard actually created a pixelated effect in the shadows. We didn't like that. The American Electric looks like three balls, and below on the street, it creates a flashlight and a brown donut effect. We didn't like that. And the GE 70-watt we put up to replace the 150 in that environment, we felt was too bright, so we've stepped it down to a 54 for West Hartford.
I have a couple of questions. One is, what is the percentage of our standalone poles to our, the poles that are gonna be maintained by Eversource?
I don't know the percentage, but we have 852 steel poles against 2,537 total lights.
And you can't figure out that percentage?
Can't do the percentage, not ever. I fail statistics, but it's a fluid that can.
It's about 33. Eight over 24, something like that. Three times eight.
Which is interesting, because now that I remember, it's the poles and the acquisition costs that really drive the cost. Berlin's was about $282. Rocky Hill's was over $300, because there are more poles against their total fixture count. So it's, I tell everyone, your acquisition cost will vary depending on the poles that you own. And it will also affect your maintenance, because obviously, if you have more steel poles, the laws of probability will come into effect for them being hit.
Yeah, okay. And then I think my last question is for Jack, just in terms of what doing this or not passing this, how this will affect the Naresco estimates, because they were based very heavily on this conversion to LEDs. So I just think it's important that the public sees these two things as connected.
Did the Naresco even mention this at all?
Yeah, you must go ahead and say it's based on, plus passing to Tanco award. So you know, the state is projected in that deal, fully less.
Yeah, okay. I just think it's important that the public understands that. It's part of the larger picture. It's part of the larger picture.
Could you go to the mic?
Yes.
We had a long discussion today about the lighting. And one of the things that we talked about is we don't, Berlin does not have a lighting standard. You haven't needed one up to this point. So the light that you saw out there is based on the current standard. We, as we go forward, one of the things we've talked about is we're going to have to establish a lighting standard for the town. And that may vary. It'll depend on the foot candles you have at certain levels. And so in certain neighborhoods, you may specify lesser foot candles. In other neighborhoods, you may specify more. Torrington is actually taking out, right now is going through all the streets. And they're actually removing lights and relocating them so they'll end up with less fixtures because they felt that they're overlit. So I mean, we didn't, in this study, we didn't do that. But we did talk today about looking at a lighting standard so we can establish the levels of lighting you have in certain areas. And that's part of the next phase.
When we perform our lighting design, I work with my project team. I haven't heard anything about removing any lights. So I think we feel that Berlin's pole locations are satisfactory. But the last 5% of the design is going to be working with Public Works on what we think needs to happen and then receiving some of that good city feedback on areas that you know may need more light or less light.
Just on the poles, the wood and the metal, the wood, we have some wood that are just, have the arm on it. So you're just going to replace the arm, I take it, obviously, on that? There's no utilities connected to them?
So the wooden poles are property of Eversource and they carry distributed electricity as well as...
There's nothing on those wooden poles. It's just the wooden pole.
Oh, you have a standalone wood pole with a light on it?
Yes.
That is an interesting situation. You've seen some of those.
Yes, our developer was very interested. Yeah. Of our neighborhood, yeah. So what do you do with that? Do you just leave that pole? Or do you...
That's a good question. I'm not sure if the wooden poles were included as part of, we looked through that pretty carefully and...
Yeah. Could show you a whole street of them. I just wonder because I have, I suspect that, I would just suspect that perhaps, you know, people on that street, if you came in and took the wood ones out, put metal ones in, may not be too happy. But, you know, I don't know. I mean, I just, I don't know what the difference is, if it's, you know, figured. And I don't know if it's anywhere else. I can't believe it's the only street in town that we have, that we would have that. I don't think we're that special, but...
We see that happen at times when money was a concern. Direct buried wood poles are much cheaper.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah. Again, I guessed that with capacity issues. But yeah, okay.
The other thing about our audit is we have, and I wish my project guy was here, we've captured the data on all of your poles. So for example, I've told some other cities, if you elect to go on a higher maintenance option with us and say, we say, you have about this many, given the incidence of knockdown, let's assume X, you should get about five knockdowns a year. If you get to the end of the year and you've only had three, we'll find your worst two poles and replace the other two.
Oh, interesting.
Because you paid for five. It's the right thing to do.
Yeah. Interesting. Great. Any other questions?
Just so it's clear now, we're going to check the park.
I put it down.
Okay, great. Specifically Zipadelli, the baseball field, because that light seems to be a severe problem. Especially the infuelers.
Okay. Yeah, we'll add it.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
And where the sample lights are at, they're going into Sage, did we say?
Serena Drive.
Serena Drive.
For six lights going into the...
Going into Sage Park have the new ones.
The new ones, okay.
I believe we put up three and three.
Yep.
With a high-pressure sodium in between so you don't get bleed over.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Could you explain three and three again?
Three GE, then some high-pressure sodium, then three Cree, so that you can get a clear distinction between the two, the light spread in between.
So the GE are the first ones going in.
Well, the GE are part of the pilot program. We have run our financial analysis based on using GE as the overall...
Right, I'm just, I'm going to drive, I actually drove there. We were going to see lights in Meriden and did a little trip over to Serena Drive and I just, I thought I was seeing all the same light. But you're saying there is some differentiation and I will go check to see that. But maybe that's a good thing. I didn't see any differentiation. But I do, Mayor, just need to comment that, you know, this is an asset that is being purchased from Eversource. A little different kind of situation here. We have a conservation load management that is associated with the Naresco rebate. You know, just for the conversations, I just, I don't want to influence this one way or the other. I'm going to be abstaining from this particular vote. I tried to take it just from the view of someone is walking down the street, am I going to be okay? Or am I going to get someone, a neighbor or someone coming to me and saying, why did you do that? And we don't want to have that happen.
Someone will ask.
And it will also be, you know, it's all about me when you talk to them, not in a bad way, but your data there. And so the mayor could figure out whether his lights are going to get changed. Do you, is that data such that overlaid so you can say, oh, this is right in front of my house and you're going to change one of my lights? Because it's possible today's technology, don't know if it's even part of your contract or proposed contract, but citizens are kind of expected to have expectations that with this technology, you can tell me what's going to happen in my front yard tomorrow. So is there a timeframe in which this will be done? And then, and certainly this is stuff that we could certainly discuss further in the public hearing. But I think timing of when it's going to be completed would be helpful for our citizens.
In the proposed contract, the turnkey LED or streetlight project...
120 days or something?
120 days from the time of notice to proceed.
And notice to proceed would need to come at the time and when we can touch the lights. Eversource has told us that from the point of acquisition, where the city writes the check, it's a 60-day wait until the city actually owns. So we're not allowed to change any lights until you officially own it. At that point also, we need to be under some sort of maintenance program because you're going to be owning an asset that needs to be maintained. So in the next two months, we're going to be working on what maintenance program works best for Berlin as well as the timing of, when can we get to work? Because we need to order material. It takes about six weeks to get material in.
Okay. We good? Everybody good? Oh, yes?
Mayor, just like to comment, Naresco and Tango work together to go through the audits. And to remember back in the cash flow statement, this kind of has to happen.
Okay, I got it. We got that.
Pay for the other projects through the cash flow. So I asked him about that. Naresco did commend Tango on their fine job of the audit. The cash flow savings from this project will leverage a lot of work that has been planned out through the Naresco project. So we hope this is important.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If I may, just for the record, because we're talking about timing and logistics, the way this is envisioned, and so everybody's clear, is we're getting authorization to sign the contract, but the town manager is not going to sign the contract until we have the financing lined up. So just, and I, with the contract, I could have put in there that it's subject to the, like a financing contingency, but that won't help us because they can't order the lights. They, we can't cut a check to Eversource. Nothing's going to happen until the hearing on the 5th. So we got the approval. Now we know we're going to go forward, which brings the next step, it makes sense to do the leasing thing. And then in January, everything will get signed if the lease is in place. And then they'll do, we'll get the, you know, the order. And then you got the 60 days running where you get the lights in. So the timing is a little bit, a little bit odd, but that's the way it's going to work. So everybody's clear.
Okay. Yes?
I think we have you on the install schedule in March.
So we're on the same page then, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Okay. We good?
Good.
Got the motion, so, give the motion, all those in, I believe we had already combined those three motions, right? Is that, is that okay? Yeah, they're all combined. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Abstain.
Oh, one abstention. I'm sorry, Dave.
No problem.
Right. Yes. Yes, one abstention. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for the info. Okay. Number four. Keycard access system, Town Hall.
I'd like to make a motion to move to waive the bidding process and increase the Jakunski Humes purchase order, number 161043, for the keycard access system by $2,640 to bring the final cumulative total to $12,540, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Okay, we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any questions? We're all good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, number five. The bond documents for total roof replacement at Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School. Have a motion on this?
Sure. Make a motion to move to authorize the town manager to retain the services of Joseph Fossey LLC to prepare bond authorization documents for the bid documents, purchase and construction cost, engineering inspection, and other related costs for the total roof replacement at Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School. And authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise for January 5th, 2016, at 7:00 to hold a public hearing on and possible consider and act upon ordinance entitled an ordinance appropriating $1,300,000 for the replacement of the Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School roof authorization, authorizing the issue of $1,300,000 of bonds to the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, making of temporary borrowings to its purpose.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Yes, sir.
Mrs. McNair, can you guarantee this is the last roof replacement for a school we'll see while any of us are on?
Good question.
Unless we have another school that I wasn't aware of. Excellent.
Great. That's good for the record, isn't it? That's a good thing.
Five, maybe? Five, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Denise, do we know if this project was coordinated with Naresco too for their...
Yes. Yes, it was. In fact, this is, Doug could speak to it. I think it's going to be a little bit different than the others because they knew that this was going to be ready for the solar panels that will be put on. Doug has a, if you want to hear the acronyms for the roofing.
Sure. We're working conjunction this summer. We want to get this out a bit early so we can be first on the list for construction and hopefully get the panels on the roof before the children return. Majority of the work will be done, but there'll be some finalizing certainly in the fall. We do have in our budget, replacement of the HVAC equipment as well. We'll be working in conjunction with the roof and the solar panels. We should all come together this summer.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, any other, we all set? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, number six. The award of bid and appropriation of additional funds for the Main Street, Streetscape improvements. Let me have a look here. Actions needed. You have a motion on that?
I have a motion to move toward the Main Street, Streetscape, Berlin bid number 2016-08 to Martin Laviero Contractor, Inc., with a bid of $577,112.50. That includes the base bid and add alternatives 1, 2, and 3. And to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Martin Laviero Contractor, Inc., in the amount of $577,112. Oh, this is the action needed, but that's okay. And enter into up to $57,700 in change orders to a total contract sum up, with change orders not to exceed $634,823.50. So we need a motion to authorize the use of up to $41,855 from the town's public work ex bonded road account for the project.
Yeah, combine those two motions. All right, we have a second on that, those?
Second.
All right, discussion? Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, just a quick comment. There was a comment in here that staff's recommending the town council authorize the use of those $41,855 for the town's public works bonded road account. I did talk with Mr. Ren and he did indicate that that bond authorization can use this. So I'm assuming that there are some road aspects of it that were clear there. So that was the response that I got. So just wanted to share that with everyone.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, number seven. Lucky number seven. The consulting agreement for the train station area steep project. Motion on this?
Okay, I move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract and change orders with Malone and McBroom, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $84,700 from the steep downtown sidewalks account.
Great. Is there a second on this?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Anything we need to know? Anything else? We're good? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number eight. Authorize the town manager to enter into a developer agreement regarding 889 Farmington Avenue, the former Pioneer Precision Products property. Motion on this for discussion?
Okay. I move to designate CIL as the preferred developer for the 889 Farmington, excuse me, Farmington Avenue project and authorize the town manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding regarding the developer designation and further to negotiate a developer agreement for the property with CIL Development Incorporated, subject to the review and approval of the memorandum of understanding by Corporation Council.
Is there a second on this? Second?
Second.
For a discussion? Thank you. Discussions? Any issues? Anyone? Yes?
Okay, I have a question. In terms of, I know this is kind of a memorandum of understanding and there's no kind of real plan in place, but is there any timeframe around this where we have to start getting something concrete or is this just kind of open-ended? It's somewhat open-ended. We do have someone from CIL here, so Chris will also introduce him. It will be in conjunction with other projects that are going on, the Streetscape and the train station and things. So there's no timeframe for the developers' agreement to be reached, but what Chris and the group were looking for is more of a partner for the future of that parcel. So, and I'll turn it over to Chris.
Excuse me. We're actually going to be having a meeting with DECD and local officials and CIL in February, essentially to talk about the different issues. You remember, we had gotten monies for the environmental issues on the site. The nice thing about CIL is they came into it with an open, let's sit down and talk about what you would like. There were one of two folks that had come in. There's no set timeframe, but I know to working with two different projects with CIL, we're very confident. Kent Schwendy is here from CIL, if you do have any particular questions for him.
Okay, other, we have other questions? Dave?
Yeah, so in their proposal from CIL, they have a statement indicating that close coordination needs take place essentially for a successful development. And they state, because public financing will be a key component of making the project financially feasible, was one statement that caught my attention. And they indicate that, and they give some kind of figures about housing costs and so forth in that area and other places. And indicate that local and state funds will be necessary to close the financing gap. So my question is, is how much is CIL anticipating providing and how much expectations do they they have for public, how much public funds are they expecting or proposing, needing?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kent Schwendy, I'm the president and CEO of CIL.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, thank you. To answer your question very directly, I would say we don't know yet. It's all going to depend on what we decide to do with the town and what the program results are, and from that, we'll identify a gap and see what the funding is. CIL expects to have some type of equity investment in the project, just like we did on Depot Crossing. That amount will be determined as we put the program together with the town. So unfortunately, I don't know right now what the project budget is going to be, nor do I know what the gap is going to be, so I can't give you any other honest answer.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up on, so this is just going to be, there's no commercial on this, didn't we originally have on this little parcel, there was going to be some commercial on the bottom floors, is that what I remember from?
We did, yes. The approval was 20 apartments above retail and office.
On one floor of?
Yeah, on the bottom floor. We had had a discussion with Mr. Schwendy, and that is going to be part of the discussion as we go forward.
Oh, still, okay, so it's still under discussion?
Yeah, no, nothing is solidified at this point. To go back to your question, Counselor Evans, one of the things that actually impressed us with CIL is every project they had gone into, or at least the majority of them, there was a partnership, particularly with the state. I know that the state in particular has been a major partner with them on a lot of the programs, particularly with housing. And I know that we, again, will sit down with them and really look to, look to the state first and primarily on this project.
Okay, and also, I guess going forward, like you guys sort of said it, you know, we don't really know what's going to happen in that area yet, I mean, that's part of that, there's the other projects maybe coming up in that area, obviously, whatever they might be.
Projects which shall remain new.
Whatever they shall be, and, you know, there's a road going through there, right, I guess, to gain access to that area, so we have to kind of wait, I would assume, till some of that plays out, right, before we really can finalize that parcel? That parcel would be separate from, because the road gives you access, right, that road that's proposed in there?
Yes.
And it probably depends upon maybe what's in the front on that vacant parcel right now?
Yes, right now, the plan is to go with the boulevard itself and the parcel. There's no immediate plans for the three parcels in front.
Right.
But again, discussion's still ongoing, but I think the way we had spoken about it, particularly what they were talking about, was to go with it, see as it progresses with the boulevard and this parcel.
Okay, great.
Couple of questions. The RFP for this mentioned that whoever bid on this project would have to tell us how much they were willing to pay for the property. So has there been an assessment done on what this property's worth, and what we're going to expect from this yet?
I do not know of an appraisal that was done on it. I know both parties had come in with an offer of a dollar, particularly, I think, because of the environmental issues and the fact that we are still working with DEP on finalizing the next steps on what we can do. We had our environmental consultant put an updated formal action plan in, which should get us to the step we know exactly where, what we need to do. But as of the time when this was due, we did not know that.
Okay. Did any of the bidders, including CIL, give any voluntary alternates suggesting they needed more land to make this economically viable on its own without any taxpayer funds?
Neither one of the?
Whether it's state grants?
Yeah, neither the one that we had that had come in, the others I had spoken with had said the project was not economically viable for what they had done in the past. There was five or six others that I'd spoken to. The only two that came in were able to do a project on this size.
Okay.
Mayor? Yes, Joe. If this property's developed, it will need this access road or driveway, or whatever you want to call it, that was discussed at length, and there was state money and then there wasn't state money. Has funding been approved for that, or will the Berlin taxpayers have to pay for that driveway or road, wherever you want to call it?
We, my understanding is we have the $500,000 grant for the road itself, for the boulevard, in place already.
Because the early discussions of the old police station design, there was $500,000 from the state, but also $500,000 in the police station budget. Will it cost a million dollars to build that driveway?
I think the original figure was closer to a $300,000 portion from the, attributed to the police station, but I think that was changed in some of the more recent plans, but the 500 is currently earmarked for that boulevard. And there are no other funds at this point contemplated that I'm aware of to come, not that that may not become necessary depending on the configuration of the boulevard or road or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
I think the estimate for the boulevard was like 370, 390, whatever it was, but the steep grant that we?
Covered it all.
That we agreed to, that we passed, that we were going to take, was for $500,000.
You may be right.
So, the boulevard may not have actually been estimated at 500,000, but that was what we were awarded from the state.
Right.
And we passed to take that money.
And the 300 that was attributed to the police station has been taken out of that calculation for the, but I think?
But the funds are available, was my question. So just if I could recap, so I understand this picture better. We have a piece of land that we don't know what's going to go in front of it. We can build a driveway to it, we have that part. We don't know how much the environmentals are going to cost to clean up, and we don't know if we want to build retail or residential, but we want to select a developer at this point because we don't know how much the land is worth. Am I understanding the picture correctly?
I think that, the way it had been described to me, because I sat on the committee to select the preferred developer, was that what was being sought was more of a partner for the development of this parcel that we own and need to do something with, both environmentally and then also because it's where it is, in terms of even without, you know, the police station or anything, but it's right near the train station, it's near Depot Crossing, it's near our Streetscape project, it's right in that heart of what is the new downtown or the old downtown, whatever, and so we were looking for more of a partner rather than the project per se. So, I guess the answer is yes.
I just think it's early to lock in a developer at this point, because we really don't know what our plans are for the front property.
But I also think that there's a need to have someone who has some expertise in planning further than what we may be able to provide to help guide us as to what might be possible in that area for the future, not just for today, or the train station is going to be a major hub for the area, not just Berlin. So I think there was some, and it may, in your opinion, be early, but I think we need additional assistance, and if they're willing to provide that in concert with economic development and the council and everyone else that would be involved, planning and zoning, there's a lot of factors that need to get weighed in.
And I think that we will see 20 apartments on the property. The question is whether or not the retail and office below is economically viable, and that's really where the discussion is.
Basically, we're committing to give the property away. I just think it's early in the process to do that. Somebody will always take it for free.
Perhaps the best, if I may just chime in, at this point, my understanding from Jim Mahoney, and Jim would be the best one to explain this, because he's done this dance several times already, that I remember. The memorandum of understanding is nothing more than a selection of somebody to work with to help you develop what you might do with the property. There's no commitment, there's no money. It's really a development of a plan, and if it starts to have some shape or some form that the town is comfortable with, and it looks like the state will, you know, provide the financing, then you hammer out a detailed agreement that will include what the proposal's going to look like, what the development's going to look like, how much it's going to cost, who's putting in what. But at this point, there's really no commitment, except we, we're promising this developer that we're not going to date any other developers. We're going to date this developer for now, and he's going to help us find what we can do with this. And that's, we haven't even done the memorandum of understanding yet, but Jim Mahoney told me he's got a form that he used before, and he has an idea, a concept, how he's going to structure it, but there's really no commitment until we get a little bit clearer, till our lens looks clearer. And if you don't designate a preferred developer, you don't have somebody that will help you bring this into focus, get the state agencies involved where you could find out what the funding potentials are for different possibilities. If you do this, you might get this much money. If you do that, you might get that much money. And that's what the preferred developer does, and why they went through this vetting process, is to find the best consultant to help you clarify what you want to do or what the possibilities are. If you don't like what's happening a month or two or three down the road, you just say, no, that's not what we want to do, we changed the direction, there's really, you haven't signed anything. That's why it's so fuzzy at this point, is because you, there's a lot of possibilities, and maybe the CEO of CIL, I can't remember your name, I apologize, but perhaps you could chime in, because you're the one that talked with Jim about this.
Yeah, and I'm not sure I could say it any better than you just did. This really is just the beginning of a process. It's just, from the town's perspective, there are two important factors. One is an assurance that we're going to do our part and help to provide the information to move it forward, and to make sure that you're not incurring any costs, that anything that we do during this period of the memorandum of understanding is all our cost, it's part of our pre-development. From our standpoint, the reason we're willing to do that is because we have preferred developer status, which means that if we can come to agreement with you on what to do going forward, you're not going to rebid it or give it to someone else, we're going to negotiate the fair deal and move forward. And on the other hand, the other thing that also allows us to do is to designate during that memorandum of understanding period, the timeline and the process that will follow throughout, so that we don't get hung up, and, you know, sometimes projects get hung up because no one really has a definite timeline. So the memorandum of understanding time period is essentially an opportunity to put all that down in writing, agree with what we're doing, and then create what's called a developers' agreement. And that will actually tell who's doing what, what the prices are, who's paying for what, everything will be designated. That will have to come back before you anyway. So this is just to get the ball rolling and to make sure that we're all dealing fairly with each other as we go forward.
Okay, thank you very much, Kent.
Thank you.
Wow, thanks. Any other input? Dave?
Yeah, just one of his comments made some, struck me in an odd way. You said that, you know, we'd come to a fair deal on it. Coming to that, a lot of times, in most situations, is through a bidding process. So I'm not quite sure, and maybe you could?
Sure.
Mend yourself to the Sherwood example potentially, as to how we could ensure that we're doing the right deal, and that there's not any one particular party that's benefiting adversely.
Well, I guess I would say that the only reason you should enter into a memorandum of understanding with a preferred developer is if you trust that that developer is going to work honestly with you, and the developer, us, have to believe that the town's going to work honestly with us. We've done this before with Berlin, so, you know, we have that level of trust. We hope that you have it with us, but the real test comes when the staff and everyone else has to look at the proposed development agreement and then say, does this get what the town wants? And that's really what's fair. If the town can get what they want and we can get what we want, that's a fair deal. And by the way, no one's going to get rich on this project. This is a very difficult project, as we put in, as you pointed out in our analysis. This is a very difficult project to make work financially. It's going to require gap funding from the state or from someone, so the deal isn't going to be two-sided. It's not going to be the town and CIL. It's going to be the town, CIL, probably one or two state agencies, most likely a bank doing a conventional mortgage. There are going to be a lot of pieces, not unlike the deal that we did with Depot Crossing, which included a land swap between three entities, five different funding sources. It's complicated to do these projects, and that's what we're here for, is to help find a way to make it happen.
Okay, we good? Pretty good? All right, so we have the motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, please.
Uh, motion carries.
Was that a 5-2 vote?
Yes, right, 5-2? Three, okay.
Four, three.
Okay. Okay, all right, number nine. Authorization to initiate a process to sell the tax lien on 303 New Britain Road. I know we've had some discussions about this, I guess this has been around before, right, several times, this particular property, so, take a motion for discussion?
Sure, I move to authorize the staff to initiate a process to sell the tax liens on 303 New Britain Road, zero Route 9, zero New Britain Road Lot 11A, zero New Britain Road Lot 2A, and to report back to the town council with the results of the RFP process and a recommendation regarding the sale of the tax liens.
Okay, we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Questions? Concerns? Dave?
Just a question on how much it'll cost to do the RFP, and any expectations on how much we might make from this?
I do not know the costs on that, and I apologize. David from the tax office would have that number. At this point, we don't know the amount. Right now, the property is just over $200,000 in delinquent taxes. We have a party that is interested in purchasing the tax lien and doing development on the property. I definitely can get back to you on the amount of what that would cost, but I know that this one has gone to the tax sale process, was pulled out, because this one does have an environmental issue that we have a report from Maguire Group. It's a very particular one, and I can definitely get you that cost, Mr. Evans.
Would we have any, like, just out of curiosity, ballpark, would, like, kind of, just, depending on each property, right? You really don't know? I mean, is there a ballpark?
The RFP itself would be staff done, so.
Do we have to do, we don't have to do an assessment of the property value? I mean, we have to do advertisement, we have to, Mr. Holland has to do some work.
This was done last under Bonnie Tharian, so it was many years ago, and I think that there may have been an RFP done at that time. I'm not sure if there was an appraisal done, but we would have the assessment and all of that information at least. I would rather do as little as possible cost-wise because of the nature of this property, and just get an RFP out, see what we get, and come back at that point, and if we need to go further, then spend some additional money. But this has been tossed around for many years, and this is like the last tool that can be used when something's delinquent and contaminated and in this condition. This has been a thorn in the police department's side for many years as well, because it's a spot that tends to collect things and people.
If I may, I don't know if I'm answering the question for Counselor Evans. Are you asking, or maybe confusing this with the process we went through by auctioning off the property, where you have to give the notices and?
Oh, yeah, no, no.
No, no, but that's not what you're asking. Just you're asking about the RFP process.
The RFP process, the cost, that's all I was asking.
Okay.
That's our, that's our cost right now, you know? It's all, all.
Advertising.
We're out $200,000 right now, but how much more are we going to put into it? $1,000, $2,000? And there's the potential to get some of that back, or even just the general nature of making that less of a blighted property, so, just looking at the cost and benefit.
Sure. I think the majority of it will be staff time between Mr. Mahoney and myself at this point. Again, we've gotten some feedback from the tax collector as well.
There's not even a, just again, from my own education, there's not even a wild figure that we would even anticipate, like, so 200 grand, I gotta, you know, have no clue what we would realize from that sale of that tax lien, right?
Just so there's no false expectations.
Yes.
When we've had contaminated properties in the past, we've sold the tax liens for a dollar.
Nice, okay, that's what I was kind of wondering.
But the goal is to get?
No, I get it.
It back onto the tax rolls in any way, shape, or form, not that we wouldn't entertain?
Yeah.
Legitimate offers, but?
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah.
That hasn't worked so far, but?
Don't hold our breath, I guess.
Okay, the question. If I could just understand the difference in what we, from what we did last year, someone would purchase this lien and then they would have?
Yes, that's, that's my point.
They would have the right to foreclose on the property and take ownership in that way?
Just so there isn't any confusion, that was a process where we were actually letting somebody bid on buying the property from the owner under our authority, our statutory authority, but that's a complicated process with a lot of due process, a lot of notices. This is, we're selling our tax lien, which is almost a private transaction, we're selling it to somebody, they step in our shoes and they foreclose, and then it's up to them what they do. That's the difference.
Takes us out of the process, or it does.
And we did apply for a brownfield grant, right? What's the status of that, for some of this? Was that?
We, we'll be going in for interviews in January. We've not been told?
Yeah.
Which property, if any, but I know that Tim Sullivan from DECD had contacted me, and they're looking at those right now on which ones will come in for interviews in January.
Thank you.
And just a side note, not that it makes a big difference, but the owner recently passed away at 96, so I think the chance of us trying to get money on this is probably slim and none. It is wrapped in the estate, and there's a number of properties in central Connecticut in the same status.
Okay, all right, we have the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. Number 10. It's our charter revision. Really just a discussion, I guess, no motion. I know? I know Kate put together this, thank you for that, Kate. Put that in a little cheat sheet, too, right? I think you have both, all kind of stuff. That's good. So I guess, right, the, you know, subject to discussion from everyone, I, you know, we'd like to go forward with the charter revision committee, commission, I guess. This would be the, I guess the first step would be, right, I guess would be the next meeting, from what I read in here and gather, right, would be the next meeting to, to take a vote on it, and if we get the two-thirds vote of the entire membership, right, we would be able to go ahead and within 30 days, appoint the commission, right?
You can sort of schedule?
Yes. I think you gave us one.
Can I pass them on?
What I had proposed was that at the next meeting, you would initiate the charter.
Yeah, is it?
I'll email it to you tonight or tomorrow, okay? And I apologize if it's not in there.
This you're talking about?
I was thinking about the calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was email.
I don't have it myself, and I just noticed that, so I'm not sure.
I think that was a one pager email.
But it would be where you would initiate at the next meeting the charter, and then at the second meeting in January, you would appoint your membership.
The second meeting.
And kind of come up with some direction on what you might want them to do. Is that right?
Okay.
Okay.
Our, just yesterday, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, I think it was back in the budget session timeframe, we had some discussions, you know, Mr. Rosso, we talked, among others that were there, about including that into the budget for. So it is currently funded for this budget year, mostly secretarial fees, or not fees, but to pay for that service and assistance in that charter revision process. And it's something that may prove fruitful, or there may not be anything that needs to be changed. But we felt that it was a time to consider that, and I think it was well worth our time and consideration at this, this juncture.
Okay, yes, Peter.
Having been in a couple of these wars, we have to make sure that we know what we want to do and instruct the committee. However, once the committee is constituted, they can do whatever they want. I mean, we'll have say at the end, but there's a complicated formula of votes and how, how we vote as a, as a council and how the committee votes. So the, the membership of the committee is as important as our charge. I just think we, we should know what we want to do, what our motives are or what our thinking is, before we go out and let the horse out of the barn, so to speak. And, you know, it's a real concern. I, I was on four of them, I think, and three of them were pretty well structured, and we got a lot done, but one ran wild and it ended up where we didn't get a positive vote after all that work at, at the referendum. Also, I think the timetable is set up by the clerk, almost dictates if we want to assure success, that we have it at the normal, regular election in November. Otherwise, then you run into numbers of mandatory positive votes. So, you know, if, if we have a legit reason to do this, that's fine. I think we have to hash that out. I think we should know what we want to change and why.
Just having lived through a lot of the councils over the years, I, I think what I would suggest you do is have the staff, the longtime staff that works with the charter, the town clerk, town managers, the finance people, have the staff come up with a recommended list of things they believe are either obsolete, archaic, need to be changed, cumbersome, not, not up to date with what's going on. There's, come up with like a target list of what they think you should do. Mull that over, come up with a, I agree with the Councilor Rosso, have a very focused mission, because if you just pick 10 or 15 people and say, what do you think? They might go through this and come up with stuff. And unless you've worked with this on a day-to-day basis and been in, in a municipality, you don't really know what can be changed and what can't, why it's in there. Jim Ren knows, Denise knows, Kate Wall knows. I think you ought to start with a little more focus before you go off on a mission. That's my suggestion.
Yeah, no, I, from my perspective, I, I think that's our hope and plan, is that we do have some focus on certain items that we would like to have the commission, the charter review commission, you know, discuss and then come back with.
That's one reason why we've kind of spread it out a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I get it, no, we get it.
You know, so that you have some time.
Right, so, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
So if you do that, I mean, I would, you know, from my opinion, you know, do that. I mean, staff, and we can talk to staff, too, and.
Then we can talk to top managers tomorrow.
Yeah, and just get some things out there for discussion.
And also to think of potential people that you think might want to serve in that capacity and have the, the ability to serve, you know, that might be interested and have something to offer, because that, that will make a big difference, too.
Yeah, no, I, we definitely will consider all that, yeah, absolutely. So, so with that in mind, go, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
I just had a question, and you, you probably answered it. Just because we have a focus and, and they have outlined what they want them to address, they can look at everything and anything, right? So we're giving them direction, but once they meet as a commission, they can, they can change anything, that's right?
They can, but then you'll have a chance at the, when you get towards the end of the process, to either accept or reject what they're, what they've done. And the other consideration, why you need a focus, is somebody who's not familiar with the municipal law and state law, they might suggest, let's change this because it seems practical and reasonable, but it might be inconsistent with state statutes. So there's a whole lot of moving parts that have to all come together. You know, you might want to change something, but you can't because of state law. And that's why you, you have to give them some focus, and then at the end of it, you hope that they followed your lead, and then it's something that you can adopt and.
Yes, absolutely.
So I haven't experienced these before either. Is there typically, is the attorney, like, you know, is someone on with the commission that can help guide them in that respect, or is it just kind of a free-for-all?
That's, and Kate can speak to it, because I was not town manager when the last charter revision commissions were formed, but generally, there's a liaison, a staff liaison, and, you know, whether you feel it should be the town clerk, who is probably the most familiar with a great deal of the charter. But then, you know, you, you have an RFP out for council, but, you know, whether or not you would not require, but expect that council would attend every, because there's going to be a lot of questions, or have council come to one of the meetings just to make sure that they're not doing something that is contrary to state statute. So there are a lot of moving parts in that. Kate can speak to that.
Is someone from council typically on the commission, or?
Well, I think Denise was referring to as corporation counsel.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, which is, it's very confusing, it is. It is, and that's something that I, Mark and I talked about, was the fact that you have an RFP out with the corporation counsel, and it's just sometimes the timing of it. But right now, we can go ahead with it. I believe that you can put people on to the charter revision, but it can only be, no more than one-third of the membership can be on a political bar or a public body. So, okay, I, I think there's something like that. So it's, you know, there, there's a, a limit, all right? The issue is really and truly just the meetings and how involved it gets.
Right.
I know.
And if I remember correctly, it's two-thirds of a vote of this body that constitute. Now, my math isn't great, but two-thirds is five.
Five. Five, you go higher, yeah.
Yeah, right. Because if it was nine, it'd be six.
Yes.
So at seven, I assume it would be five.
Two and a third.
Another, just some other.
To go forward.
Right, right.
You, you do have attorneys in town that live in town. You may be able to appoint, like, as part of the citizen group that's on there, you can appoint people that have some legal background that may be able to offer some valuable service to the town that won't cost the town money, but they can, can help in the process. That wouldn't be a bad idea to consider. You also have consultants, you have CCM. There's people that are consultants who help draft, you know, they can guide you, you know, so you got to look at a bunch of different things once you get started, but you, you want to come up with the, picking the panel's going to be an important part of the thing.
Mayor?
Yes, yeah, Dave, yes, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
So, you know, the staff recommendation is something I'd received earlier, actually, in conversation as budget chair and working closely with Mr. Ren. He gave a specific example that affects all of our ability to influence or control how well we do as a town with respect to our budget and being able to stay within a budget and so forth, and had a lot to do with contracts and who approves particular contracts. Certainly, we can get into some specifics, but he felt that, that could be a great possibility to incorporate the ability to approve contracts, to be with the folks that are approving the dollars, and that he felt that that was something that, that we might want to consider. Maybe we will, maybe we won't, but that's the example I think I'm hearing from town manager and clerk, that we should have staff give some input on what are some of the things that they know in the charter that are stumbling blocks to us being an effective and efficient government and, and keeping taxes down for our citizens.
I have a question. When you say approving contracts, what kinds of contracts are you talking about?
Anything that we spend money on in the town.
Okay, understood.
Whether it's our budget or other budgets.
Understood. For next meeting, if we're going to actually approve moving forward on this, are, are we going to get some more information on what the commission's going to look like, how many people, what our focus points are? Are you looking for input from us, or, you know, I, I just feel like if this is going to happen in two weeks, I have a lot of questions.
Well, I think that, I'm thinking that, and I know there's a lot of information. I read through this, and there's much more than this, I think, too, but maybe the next meeting, I mean, will you tell, tell me, Kate, the, the timeline to keep us, I know we have to make the November election deadline, I know there's a bunch of dates and times and things we need to do for that. So with that in mind, we all have a lot of questions, I think every one of us, except maybe Peter, he knows.
He's listening.
He's afraid to say, but that's all right, no, we get it. But, so, yeah, could we start, you know, we'll all start thinking, reading some of this stuff, and maybe next meeting, if we have some time or in, or in between, you know, tell me the best way to get the information to, to all of us so we can, you know, make some informed decisions, obviously.
I want to apologize again because I don't know why I didn't put the schedule here. I don't understand that. But I will get it out to everybody tomorrow. It is a tentative schedule. The biggest thing is I need to have the question to this day in September. So that's why we need to have it, you know.
So September 8th, 2016, last day for municipality to prove questions to appear on the ballot?
Yes.
So by then?
Yes.
We have that.
And you have public hearings that have to be held.
Before.
Those things. We've had charters with, have gone very quickly. It's been an in-and-out thing, that's the end of it. When I first started here in 2002, I served on one of the charter revisions with Peter, and we really went through that charter a great deal. So that took a lot of time, but again, I don't think that that went, I think that went on that November ballot.
Yes.
So it was something that could be done, and I don't think that it'll be as involved this time as it was in 2002.
What'd you do, you went through the whole thing?
Just about.
Did you? Yeah.
There's some glitches that have appeared with, with different things, so those are things that we may want to revisit, you know, but.
Yeah.
Those, that's why you want staff, you know, by all of us, even, there's times I've talked to, you know, we've all talked to Bob and said, what do you think this really means, you know, or how was that handled, or what's the interpretation now? So those are things that I think you're very wise to ask staff to, they've been living it, to see if they can't fine-tune it a little bit.
Right, so if, you know, recognizing it's, you know.
And you can move that back. I mean, you don't have to do it in January.
Holidays are coming, yeah, so, so I mean, if we, well, so let's say we start with, you know, gathering some information, and all of us have our input in the, the next meeting.
I can put this back on the agenda similar to what's on tonight for more discussion.
Some more discussion, and then we have some more questions. We can maybe come up with some things that we're looking at, maybe putting on the charter review commission. We could, now, so let's just say, so let's just say we do that next meeting, so the second meeting in January now, we come to the, okay, so we have some kind of tentative list, you know, maybe we don't agree upon the list, but we can work that out. So now we take the vote, January, the second meeting in January, we take the vote. Can we, at that meeting, also appoint, or do we wait till the, I mean, do you have to go?
You can do it that way, Mark. You can do it where you initiate.
And I'm just worried about timing, so we don't rush everybody as we get into the process, not so much in the beginning, but it's, you know, we want to get it right from the beginning, obviously.
You would be fine with that if the, if, again, if you decide the second meeting in January, that you initiate the charter revision, you appoint your, your members, and you give them focus, you can do that all at that same meeting.
Or if it, if it happens to just.
Or you can move it into February.
To the first meeting in February, which would still give everyone plenty of time to get through the schedule, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Does, does this commission follow the same rules in terms of membership and party affiliation? Just if it does, and, you know, there's people that are interested, making sure that they're aware of it, you know, or is it just pure appointment? Because if it's pure appointment, then it doesn't matter.
No, we always have to have the minority representation.
But people can, would be similar, they'd put their names in, and then, you know, if there's, if we're doing seven people and there's nine in there, then we as a council would appoint that way, or is it just we, we appoint?
That's one of the things that can be talked about, is your size of your membership. I think it's from.
Five to 15.
Five to 15.
Yeah.
So you decide on seven? I mean, then do each of you put up a person? I mean, that's up to things that you can decide.
Well, that's my question. Can people apply, like we do with all of our other commissions?
Usually it's in a, they're not an actual application.
Okay.
It's usually, you know, or you may decide that, I mean, it is a Republican council now, so they may say they're going to do a five Republican, two Democrat.
Sure, and that wasn't my question. My question just was if we just appoint the people, go out and talk to people and say, okay, you're going to be on it, or is it an application process? That's all, just in case people wanted to.
I think it's something that you guys can all talk about, what you're comfortable with, you know.
And then last time, for the, for the numbers, you know, I mean, 15 seems way too unwieldy, right? And it's a little crazy. I doubt probably never, nothing would ever be done.
I would suggest as few as possible.
Yeah, so maybe seven, seems like a number that might be workable.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, you know, not that we agreed to that, but five or seven.
Seven or nine, you know.
Not bigger than that, no, I would agree. But we, again, still all subject to discussion.
Right, okay, okay.
Yeah, whatever we want to talk about. So maybe we all could do a little homework in the next few weeks while we're wrapping Christmas presents. I'm sure we could read this while we're singing Christmas carols, but understandable that we'll have some information, maybe some more. We can do some homework, you sent us some stuff, and maybe start working on a, maybe a rough list, you know, I know it's, again, I don't think.
That would be helpful.
Huh?
That would be helpful.
Yeah, just to start, you know, a rough list.
I think that through Denise, we can, we have top managers tomorrow. We can definitely start a list of what we see as potential and get it to you, you know, Denise can give it to you.
That makes sense, that makes sense to everybody?
Yeah, and if it comes from you guys, that's fine. I just, I want to make sure I know when I'm voting on it. That's why, that was my only concern, if we, if I didn't get to see what we're voting on.
I hope you all know what we're voting on, but you will know, everybody will know, yes, yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's, that's all, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes.
So I went back and looked at the last charter revision. I mean, there wasn't too much discussion about what they, their charge was and what they needed to do. I think there was more discussion about who should be on it, quite frankly.
That's surprising.
Because my name showed up there, so for some reason, I don't know why. But, so I, I think that could be helpful. Maybe, Kate, you could share those particular minutes. Could send that out to the council members so that they can just see what happened last time we did one of these, or if there's multiple ones.
The minutes may not go out, I can do the special tomorrow. The minutes may not go out until Thursday, upgrading the. All right, but just so that you know the timeframe on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all have agreed that. Yeah, I mean, I think we all have agreed that we need a, some education, perhaps, other than you, Peter, I know you pretty much know. And you, Kate, I'm talking about the rest of us that have not been through it, obviously, so we'll get that going on for the next time. So, thank you. Okay, so let's move on here. I guess we're going to, I know we have to add that one item, but let's just finish with, we have the, everybody got the revised, number 11 here, the revised calendar? I think you passed out a revised calendar, so I guess we would need a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve the attached calendar for the town council meetings for 2016 and January of 2017.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion, any discussion? Everybody, you guys have any goods? Everybody good? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
And I have a new number 12.
Right.
From what I passed out before.
Oh, okay, different, oh, okay, that's different, too. Changed, uh...
Changed number 12.
Change number 12.
Yeah, you guys are good, that's good, that's impressive, that's very impressive.
There you go.
Shorter.
Oh, better, better.
Everybody have one?
You all got one now?
If there's extra, yeah, good, thank you.
Shorter is better, sometimes the later, yeah, shorter is better. Okay, so, item number 12.
To, uh...
Yes, we're going to move to add the authorization to file an application for a steep grant.
First of all, you have to add it to the agenda.
Yeah, so we're going to motion to add it.
Make a motion to add agenda item number 12, authorization to file an application for a steep grant to the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, we have added now this item as number 12. Now, let's look to item 12.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the town of Berlin to apply for a 2016 steep grant in the amount of $500,000 for the completion of the Main Street area streetscapes.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, discussion, any discussion, questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
So, a committee of one sometimes doesn't get very far, but I'll speak up anyway. I'm on the Worthington Meeting House Committee, or Subcommittee for the council. I did ask Mr. Mahoney if he would bring it before the Economic Development Commission. I'm assuming he did. Mr. Ridge can maybe confirm that.
Yes.
And just if you had any feedback as to why they chose this one to recommend over the Worthington Meeting House.
I think the concern with the Meeting House was if $500,000 wasn't a cover it. The numbers Mr. Mahoney had understood was about $1 million for the project, and whether or not...
Did he explore doing a portion of the project?
We explored it...
Either the mechanicals or the first floor, or something like that.
Mr. Mahoney's concern was splitting an application has not been successful in the past, that had been done, and what the state had said was, "We like this piece, but not that piece", and his, excuse me, Mr. Mahoney's recommendation was to do the grant just for one particular project for the full $500,000.
So, but the streetscape is in addition, is not, doesn't cover the whole project here, though?
This will cover the remaining project for sections, I think it's one, three, and five on the second.
Did we receive grants in any other parts of this?
Yes, we would receive grants for sections two, four, and six.
So I don't understand your logic, the difference. So there was other grants, but it was a project.
Previously, what Mr. Mahoney had told me is they had applied for two different grants. The $500,000 was split into two, 250 and 250, and they had received only one of the two instead of the full $500,000. So his recommendation was to go with one grant for the full amount instead of splitting it up.
I think also what Jim felt was that the chances of success for a $500,000 grant, which would only cover a portion of what needs to get done, wouldn't have as much chance as a grant for completing what is left on the streetscape. Does that make sense?
I have a question.
Yes.
Why did we choose to go with the streetscapes as opposed to the facade program?
The Economic Development Commission had met this evening and voted on it. The overwhelming five-to-two vote was that finishing this project and completing the downtown area would be a better use of the money at the moment. Looking for additional investment in town, folks coming through and looking at the downtown would see what was done with the new streetscape plantings, and that it would be a better use of the money immediately than the facade program.
I noticed, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, continue.
I noticed, I came in a little later, but...
Yes.
That there was going to be some matching funds from the town with the streetscape program, but with the facade program, it was matching funds from the businesses. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thanks.
What is the status of the facade program to date? I mean, that probably made, helped them decide if we haven't spent all the money.
Yes.
Probably wanted to get another, another grant.
Yeah, that was part of the decision. We have approximately $105,000 left, which, in the program. I had presented to the Economic Development Commission that we have a couple folks that probably would use up the majority of that money by probably mid to end of February at the pace we're going.
Do we have others in the pipeline who are looking for money for the facade program, or...
Yes, we currently, again, we work with the Jakunski-Humes. We, they had done before and after renditions for four different properties, and there's a fifth property which is yet to be completed with the rendition.
Okay, any other questions? Anything else? All right, so we have this motion on the floor here, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, six to one. Thank you. Now we are on to the town manager's report.
Yes, just a couple of things. The budget process, my meetings with departments has begun today. Councilman Evans is sitting in as budget chair, and we start, I think this week and most of next week, or portion of next week, so we're underway, and I'll have more information as time goes on. We are also in the process of hiring, as you may know, our building official had retired at the end of, or the middle of August, Nick Chirico, and we're in the process of hiring a new building official. Hopefully, we will have someone on board permanently in January with the holidays. It's a little difficult to get everyone in. We're going to be interviewing after January 1st, and next week being the holiday season, we are starting a new holiday with the town hall, the library, community center, and the senior center will be closed on Christmas Eve as well as Christmas Day. This was a switch that the, several of the unions had agreed upon, switching Veterans Day. So we will be closed all day on Christmas Eve, as it was felt that it was not as productive a day as Veterans Day. Most businesses have started to be open, our schools are open on Veterans Day, but just for purposes of anyone watching the tapes, general trash pickup and recycling will happen as usual on Christmas Eve, because Trash Away is working Christmas Eve. Christmas Day is a Friday. That, trash and recycling will happen on Saturday. So for those, it's a little wrinkled, so I just wanted to make people aware.
Okay, great, thanks. Special committee report?
Mayor? Just for the budget committee, I want to pass out a preliminary idea on when I get to have all of you join us together and talk about numbers and other things. And so, if you would take a look at any feedback you have over the next little while, we'll try to... You're that excited, I can tell.
Really chopping at the bit for this one?
It's not much different from the previous calendar, we moved some things up a little bit, hopefully to have a little more discussion after the town-wide hearing. Mr. Kugno on the Board of Education became chair of the Resource Committee, reached out to him, and we're going to meet very shortly here so that we can do what groups need to do sometimes. They form, storm, norm, and then perform. So that's the plan with, working with the Board of Education. So any feedback on the schedule would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Can I, what time is the audit meeting on Thursday? 5:30?
5:30.
5:30, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, I was just going to mention that we have a budget committee, audit committee, meeting on Thursday at 5:30 to go with the audit, the town audit, and the fraud risk assessment.
Okay, good. All right, we're good with that. On to councilors' communication, is anything...
I just want to wish the staff and everyone who works hard all year the happiest of holidays, Merry Christmas, and just to say thank you for a job well done this year, and I'm sure it will continue to go forward, so if you can pass that along, Denise, I would appreciate that.
I'll second that.
Yes. I think we're all in favor of that motion. Everybody's in favor of that? Pass that along, anybody else, any other councillor?
I just want to say, Peter, thanks for mentioning about the lights, because I think we don't want...
Yeah, because we made that quite clear last night.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be in there, right?
Yep.
Should be in there, quite pay more. Okay, we good? All right, so, acceptance of minutes of our last hearing, December 1st, 2015. I think we're all there, we're all here. Motion on the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from our last meeting as...
December 1st.
December 1st.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved, thank you. All right, so now we will, now, quarter to 10, okay, great. Now we'll move into executive session, so we need a motion to move into our executive session.
Make a motion to move into executive session for real estate, discussion of the selection of a site, a sale or purchase of real estate by town, Beckley Road, Apple Lane, and Berlin Turnpike.
Yeah, we're going to, as part of the motion, we'll invite in Denise, Bob, Chris Edge, Jim Mahoney, and Helen Riggins as part of that motion, if you agree with that.
I agree.
Good. Second.
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 Jim's not here.
Oh, okay, oh, well, we have Chris, so, okay. Okay, so, second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, it's 9:45.